Good evening. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council regular meeting for October 15th, 2024. Before we begin, I have a few words about attending and participating in council meetings. Individuals are not allowed to disrupt meetings. This includes talking out of turn or without permission, interrupting or making sounds when someone else is talking or approaching council members or city employees who are staffing the meeting. If a person does disrupt the meeting, I will give a warning and the person's remaining comment time, or ask the person to leave the meeting room for the rest of the meeting. And my hope and my personal request is that we express ourselves without name-calling, taunting, or disparaging each other. If somebody does disrupt while somebody else is doing public comment, I will help you retain the time that you have just to stop the interruption. I do believe that the vast majority of people are able to give public comment in a respectful and polite way, and I thank you all for being here tonight. So with that, city clerk, can we do roll call?
Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Malakutian.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen-House.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers on.
Here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nguyen-House, could you lead us in the flag?
All rise. The allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. And as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have two proclamations tonight. The first one will be read by Councilmember John Stokes and received by Laura Lawler and Curtis Kukel, and then we'll have another proclamation after that for Hindu American Awareness and Appreciation Month, and that will be read by Councilmember Conrad Lee and received by Atul Hirpura. So we will read each one and then come back for pictures. So go ahead, Councilmember Stokes.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Whereas Bellevue has adopted the goal of integrating natural and built environments to create a sustainable urban habit, and whereas the city is dedicated to providing educational opportunities to foster environmental awareness, appreciation, and stewardship of our natural, cultural, and historical resources, and whereas the residents of Bellevue value clean air and water, wildlife habitat, and distinctly unique places to live, work, and play, and whereas trees increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees are essential to protecting salmon habitat by providing shade along streams and preserving water quality by preventing erosion, and whereas Bellevue, for the 33rd consecutive year, has been recognized as a Tree City USA community by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and whereas Bellevue is committed to working with its residents and businesses to help build a healthy community by planting trees in our park spaces and giving them away for planting on private property. Now therefore I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the October 26th, 2024 as Arbor Day in Bellevue, and urge all community members to plant trees to help promote the well-being of present and future generations.
Thank you, Councilmember Stokes. So Laura Lawler is our Bellevue Master Naturalist, and Curtis Kukel is our Park Ranger, and voila, you're right there.
Good evening. I'm honored today to introduce Laura Lawler, one of our Bellevue Naturalists volunteer corps, on behalf of our Bellevue Naturalists Volunteer Corps. Bellevue Naturalists play an instrumental role in our planting event that we do annually. This year will be on October 26th, and year-round at all sorts of really interesting projects helping to manage our natural areas throughout the Bellevue Park System. So honored to turn it over to Laura.
Hey, everyone. So I just wanted to say I truly appreciate the city's commitment to trees, especially to native trees and environments. We're familiar with Bellevue's history of logging agriculture and now development. As a Bellevue naturalist, I've learned it takes 300 years to restore. So I think about how our city's values and ongoing restoration initiatives are essential to our long-term trajectory of sustaining our treasured native environments. Of course, local access to such environments helps us de-stress, refresh ourselves, stay fit, and feel peace. I also find that the more we conscientiously interact with native environments, the more we respect and love this place we call home. So I'd also like to thank council, the Parks Department, and especially rangers like Curtis and Kaylee for the inclusive approach taken to stewardship. I think we're all very glad to be able to contribute.
Great, thank you so much. So if people want to know more about Arbor Day, where would they find the information?
We are, I'm happy to say, 100% full for our planting event, but the National Arbor Day Foundation has really great resources to learn about trees for your area, and then Bellevue also has some really good resources online as well.
Okay, great, thank you. Go ahead and sit down, we'll call you up for a photo. And now it's the Hindu American Awareness and Appreciation Month proclamation read by Councilmember Conrad Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It is my honor and privilege and pleasure to read the following proclamation. Whereas Hindu American Awareness and Appreciation Month seeks to bring local awareness, recognition, and acknowledgement of the significant contributions made by Hindu Americans across the United States, and whereas Hindu Americans represent diverse ethnic backgrounds, including individuals of Indian, Pakistani, Bangladeshi, Malaysian, Indonesian, Afghani, Nepali, Bhutanese, Sri Lankan, Fijian, Caribbean, and European descent, and whereas our city and nation have greatly benefited from Hindu Americans, including through the Vendetta philosophy, Ayurvedic medicine, classic meditation, yoga, literature, community service, and more. And whereas October holds significant as the birth month of Mahana Gandhi and the time for major Hindu holidays such as Navaradri and Diwali, and whereas many Hindu Americans are immigrants, some coming as students in search of better economic opportunities or to unite with family members, while others arrive after facing oppression, and whereas despite their positive contributions, Hindu Americans face stereotypes and misconceptions about their heritage and have been the targets of bullying, discrimination, hate speech, and bias. Now therefore I, Conrad Lee, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of Bellevue, Washington, on behalf of the City of Council, do hereby proclaim October as Hindu American Awareness and Appreciation Month in Bellevue to increase understanding of the Hindu American community and celebrate the influences of the extraordinary cultural, ethnic, linguistic, and religious diversity of our community. Signed, Lynn Robinson, Mayor, City of Bellevue.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Welcome. Go ahead.
Good evening, entire council, mayor, deputy mayor, and their awesome staff. My name is Atul Hirpura. I'm a local leader of Hindu American for past 24 years. On behalf of Hindu American community, we accept and thank you, Mayor Robinson, City Council, city staff, and everybody here for processing and awarding the proclamation of Hindu American Heritage Awareness and Appreciation Month during this festive season of Navaradri and Diwali. This proclamation sends an impactful and a meaningful message to the Hindu American community in the city of Bellevue and the entire greater Seattle area. Additionally, it helps educate all Americans about our incredible traditions and values. Over the past few years, there has been significant growth of Hindu Americans in the region, and we have been contributing to all aspects of public life to our vibrant and diverse workforce. This proclamation brings residents immense pride and gratitude to know that the city recognizes the contribution of Hindu Americans and our close bonds with all Americans. I'm happy to share that the Hindu American community, in collaboration with various community organizations like HSS, Hindu Swayam Sevak Sangh, SEWA USA, BAPS, many local temples and others, are engaged in driving a service initiative called SEWA Diwali, a food donation campaign during this festive season in the greater Seattle region, and contribute back to local food banks and underserved in our neighborhoods. Also, the organizations like Indians in Seattle, Agbathat, Vasitrag are spearheading cross-community cultural programs for past two years, and we look forward to a similar one this year as well. And some of us have been there, so let's do that again. Thank you again for the proclamation, and I love to communicate with the council on various community service initiatives. By the way, my daughter announced in her class that she's meeting the mayor today, and that she would be in a picture with the mayor. So she's present here, very excited. We love to take pictures with you, accepting proclamation. To organize better, we can start a smaller group and then add more people in the group.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Let's go get a picture. Do I do this anyway, even if Mr. Zimmerman's not here? Okay. Well, before I ask for a motion to approve the agenda, I want to note the need to amend tonight's agenda to add one item under Council Business to address an appeal that was filed today. The appeal is related to the notice of exclusion from participating in public comment that I issued yesterday to Mr. Alex Zimmerman. And with that, I ask for the amended agenda.
I move to approve the agenda amended to add consideration of Mr. Alex Zimmerman's appeal of the notice of exclusion order to be heard under Council Business.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, has anybody signed up for oral communication?
Mr. Mayor, we do have one individual pre-registered for oral communication, so really quickly, before I call that person's name, I'll go over a few of the rules. Oral communications is for a period of no more than 30 minutes, and all topics must relate to City of Bellevue government. People speaking on items on tonight's agenda will be called first, and then if time remains, people speaking on items not on tonight's agenda will be called. Presiding officer in both of those categories is authorized to give preference to those who have not spoken to council in the last 60 days, or who will be speaking on items that will come in front of the council within the next 60 days. Each speaker is allowed to speak up to three minutes, and only three speakers can speak to any one side of a particular topic. And with that, I'll call our first speaker, who is Joe Kunzer, who is joining us online. Mr. Kunzer, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can. Your time begins now.
I want to thank you for giving me my free minutes. I wasn't aware of the agenda change, but what I did sign up for was to address, let's be honest here, if it's okay, Mr. Zimmerman's prosecution for his crimes, according to driving a suspended license. I find that extremely, as somebody who's a pedestrian, as someone with friends in the area, I find it extremely concerning on a lot of Tuesday nights that Mr. Zimmerman comes to you with hurl's hate, that he races in his car to enter jurisdiction like Kirkland, like Redmond, where my buddy's the council president, and I got to tell you, I hope someone's working on taking away his wheels before we have a tragedy. Okay? I don't want to cross the line, I don't want to threaten anybody. I'm concerned for everyone, including Mr. Zimmerman, because let's be honest, if anything happens to him physically, I'm the first suspect. I've got two parents, I'm going to have to explain why there's a cop car in the driveway. I'm going to have to have an alibi. I'm going to have to probably agree to a polygraph test, because I'm the one calling out his hatred. With that, I'd settle in, cobbit. I want to thank this mayor and this council for every occurrence to exclude Mr. Zimmerman. His hateful comments have no place anywhere. They have no place in the community with people of moral character like the mayor and the vice versa. Who's last name I can't pronounce to save my life, but I'm deeply grateful for his stance on anti-Semitism, especially what's going on at the UW. And again, Mr. Zimmerman, I hope you will pass this exclusion and make it extremely clear that mental illness or not, there's no call for hurling a Nazi salute at people. There's no call for campaigning during public meetings, and there's absolutely, positively, definitely no call or excuse for hurling a Nazi salute when someone says I gave Hindu resolution about a peaceful faith. This is the United States of America. We stand up to hate. We are Americans. We would die to protect our neighbors, because we are one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Not all white people, not all Christians, not all Jews, not all Muslims, all people. And it's worth putting our butts on sacred honor on the line for. And it's worth admitting openly that if anything happened to Mr. Zimmerman, I'd be the first suspect, and what would have to happen would have to happen if it didn't work, and I have faith in that justice system, thanks to the bravery and integrity of law enforcement officers that I've gotten to know whether as security on South Transit, or sheriffs, or bailiffs. With that, I want to thank you all for your public service. I also want to thank the court for our public service, making sure we have audio tonight. I hope I was kind, respectful, and within the bounds of the law in my comments. Thank you for your public service. Goodbye.
Thank you. That is the end of our pre-registered list, so I will ask at this time if there's anyone joining us in council chambers who would like to speak to the council, or anyone online, please raise your hand. Okay, Mayor, there are no additional hands. I'll turn it to you.
Okay, so now we're going to move on to Council Business. So we've added an item to consider an appeal of the notice of exclusion from public comment periods that I issued yesterday pertaining to Mr. Alex Zimmerman. The exclusion is from participating in public comment periods at council meetings for 30 days, and as the presiding officer, in accordance with the council rules, I have the authority to issue a notice of exclusion to any individual who repeatedly disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the council meetings. I have found that during the past six months, Mr. Zimmerman has disrupted, disturbed, or otherwise impeded the orderly conduct of our meetings on no less than 10 times. Mr. Zimmerman was warned that his behavior violated the rules each of the meetings. At six of the meetings, his behavior continued to violate the rules of decorum despite being warned, and as a result of the continued disruption, he had to be escorted out of council chambers. At two of the meetings, Mr. Zimmerman's repeated outbursts also necessitated me having to call a recess to suspend the meeting. I find that Mr. Zimmerman's violations of the rules of decorum and his refusal to correct his conduct after being warned has caused actual disruptions and disturbances and impeded the orderly conduct of the meetings, and therefore is the basis for my issuance of the notice of exclusion from participating in public comment periods at city council meetings for the next 30 days. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to our city attorney, Trizna Tanis, who will guide the council on next steps for considering the appeal filed by Mr. Zimmerman. He filed that tonight.
Mayor, good evening, council. Under council rules, any person excluded from participation in future public comment periods or from attendance at future council meetings may appeal the exclusion by submitting a written appeal stating the basis for the appeal to the city clerk within six business days after the notice of exclusion is posted on the door of council chambers. The notice of exclusion was posted yesterday, October 14th, and as the mayor stated, Mr. Zimmerman did submit a written appeal earlier today, which is timely. Again, per council rules, as there is a timely appeal received, council has to consider the appeal at tonight's council meeting. For this appeal, council will be considering and making a decision whether to uphold or overturn the mayor's exclusion order. Upholding means denying the appeal and that the mayor issued the notice of exclusion consistent with council rules. Overturning means granting the appeal and that the mayor did not properly issue the notice of exclusion. Because council will be reviewing if the mayor correctly followed council rules, I want to provide you what those rules say as a reminder. The presiding officer is authorized to issue a notice of exclusion to any individual who repeatedly disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of council meetings. The mayor is able to do this only if she considers the following factors. One, the seriousness and number of disruptions or violations. Two, their impact on the orderly conduct of council meetings. Three, whether the conduct threatens public safety. And four, the person's record at these meetings. The mayor is also required to apply the facts to these factors and decide whether to exclude the individual from public participation or from the meetings themselves, as well as the length of the exclusion, which may be up to 60 days. The notice of exclusion, as the mayor has just gone through, documents what the mayor has found to be Mr. Zimmerman's continued decorum, and a record of the dates and descriptions of occurrences of violations, the disruptions, the warnings, and continued violations. The mayor has decided that Mr. Zimmerman's violations warranted an exclusion from participating in public comment at council meetings for a period of 30 days. For this appeal, council should review both the notice of exclusion and Mr. Zimmerman's written appeal, which is supposed to contain the basis of his appeal. Council should determine whether the facts support the mayor's findings and that the mayor properly considered the required factors in issuing the exclusion order to Mr. Zimmerman for a period of 30 days. Council should not solicit any testimony, and at the end of council deliberation, council should take action to uphold or overturn the notice of exclusion. I'll turn it over to you, Mayor.
Well, how do we read the appeal?
The appeal was provided, a copy was provided to you. Do you not have that?
I don't have it in front of me. Does anybody have it?
It is in email, and he has the copy.
Okay, so I didn't see it. Has everybody had a chance to read this? Okay. Can you make copies for us, please?
I think so.
Go ahead. Give that to Michelle. Can you give that to Michelle?
Oh.
Should we take a recess?
It'll only take her a second. The notice of exclusion was emailed to you yesterday afternoon, if you want to refer to it in your email.
I saw that. I didn't see the appeal.
This needs an art to read that.
Okay. All right. Some people. Yes, you may.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Joe Kunzer. If you are still listening, the pronunciation of my last name is Nguyen-House. Nguyen-House. Thank you so much for your kind words and comments.
Okay. Has everybody had a chance to read this? Okay, let's start with a motion. Deputy Mayor, could you make a motion for us?
Yes, I'm making a motion to consider Mr. Alex Zimmerman's, or not consider Mr. Alex Zimmerman, appeal of the notice of exclusion order.
Second.
That's kind of opposite to what...
Was it?
Can we reword that maybe?
Yes.
I think the motion I'd like to hear is to uphold the...
I can't do that.
The exclusion.
Yeah. I move to uphold Mr. Alex Zimmerman's notice of exclusion order.
Second.
Okay. Are there any comments or questions? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I think we're good. So thank you for that. Move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have three study session items tonight. City manager, would you please introduce them for us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Our first item is on the local speed limit reduction, and tonight's staff will share what they have learned in the outreach phase of this project to consider lowering the speed limits on most of our local streets within the city from 25 miles per hour to 20 miles per hour. The project was started as part of the city's Vision Zero efforts and in response to con... The project was started as part of the city's Vision Zero efforts and in response to concerns about vehicle speeds in neighborhoods. We have, from our Transportation Department Director Andrew Singleakis, John Murphy, our senior planner for this project, and Vanessa Humphries, Neighborhood Traffic Safety Service Manager. And we are requesting council consider directing staff this evening to return to council with a draft ordinance lowering the speed limit on the street, local streets, most of the local streets, from 25 miles per hour to 20.
Thank you, Senior Manager Carlson, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, and council members. We're here tonight to share with you an update on this important safety project that would lower the speed limit on most local streets in Bellevue. Over the past six months, staff has been busy being out in the community, sharing information about this project. Speeding on local streets is a concern to many in the community. This project builds on successful 20 mile an hour local speed limit pilots in three Bellevue neighborhoods, which did in fact reduce streets. And it helps create a culture where safety begins on one's own local street. Tonight, we're seeking your direction to return at a later date with an ordinance on consent that will modify the city code by setting default speed limits on local streets to 20 miles an hour, except where otherwise noted. And with that, I'll turn it over to Vanessa.
Thank you, Andrew. Good evening. We presented on this project back in February, where we received direct information with the plan to return later and share what we heard, and that's why we're here tonight. So first, we will be going over a refresher of the background of the project, then a summary of outreach conducted to date, going into more detail about which streets are proposed to go to the 20 mile per hour speed limit, our implementation plan, and finally ending with seeking your direction to return with a draft ordinance for your consideration. So what are we proposing? We are proposing to lower the speed limit on most local streets from 25 to 20 miles per hour. Project implementation entails replacing about 350 speed limit signs and 150 pavement marking legends, so that the new speed limit will be very clear to the traveling public. This project is in response to community concerns about speeding, which is the number one traffic safety concern we hear on local streets. This project both supports and advances our work towards achieving Vision Zero, which is a goal to eliminate serious injuries and fatalities on Bellevue roads by 2030. Back in 2020, then council has a low speed limit approach to achieving Vision Zero. The four quadrants of the safe systems approach include safe people, safe streets, safe vehicles, and safe speeds. And so, safe speeds are an integral component of achieving this goal. And we know that lower speeds are safer for every incremental reduction in speed. It's a significant reduction in risk to pedestrians. And this project really is about communicating a culture shift in Bellevue towards safe speeds and conveying the message that safety starts on your street. Lowering speed limits is a practice that has gained favorability nationwide, as other cities have also adopted similar Vision Zero goals. And we've taken a methodical approach here in Bellevue by testing what a lower speed limit would look like in three neighborhoods in Bellevue. The first in Surrey Downs in 2020, and next along the East Bellevue Greenway Project in 2021, and in a portion of the East Gate neighborhood near Taiyi Middle School in 2022. And in each of the three, the speed limit reduction alone was data, our data showed that it was effective in reducing high-end speeding. We also conducted evaluation surveys for the East Bellevue Greenway Project, as well as the East Gate deployment, and those surveys showed strong community support for the lower speed limit. An overview of speed management in Bellevue, there are two street types in Bellevue, local streets and arterials. On the map, local streets are depicted in green, and the arterial network are the blue lines on the map. And speeds are managed on local streets by our longstanding Neighborhood Traffic Safety Traffic Calming Program, and work on arterial speed management will be upcoming next year. So what is a local street? It is officially defined in the city's comprehensive plan. Local roads make up about 64% of the streets in Bellevue, and these streets are generally, they make up a short trip. They're generally the streets you use to access your neighborhood, immediately access your neighborhood, in and out of your neighborhood. And they generally carry lower vehicle volumes, they often lack sidewalks, and they also have a variety of activities taking place on the street, everything from parking to it's the same place where you're walking the dog or getting the mail. And we often see a high presence of driveways on local streets as well. And if the community has any questions about if their street is proposed to go to 20, the project website has an interactive story map that they can use to determine if their street is proposed to go to 20. And information sharing and education has been a strong component of our outreach plan. And so with that, I'll turn it over to John so that he can share more about community outreach.
Thanks, Vanessa. So yeah, outreach has really been a cornerstone of this project since council directed us to begin outreach at the February meeting. At the onset of our activities, the purpose was to educate and answer questions from the community about what a lower speed limit would mean for Bellevue residents. Our approach to this engagement and outreach was really to go out to where the community is already congregating and meeting. We really wanted to be available to our community to reduce the barrier to access, to learn about this project, and allow staff to share information where our community is already talking about city activities. So we'll talk about what that looked like on the next slide. But we also wanted to tap into a lot of our existing community associations and networks that are well-established here in the city to make sure that they are apprised of this proposal. Through communications, we've reached tens of thousands of people through our communication channels, and we've reached out and talked to hundreds of people during our in-person outreach activities. Some, the jumping off point for our outreach on this project, like a lot of projects, was standing up a project webpage to kind of go the extra mile and really make sure our materials are accessible to most people in our community. We translated into our top eight languages and really had kind of robust features on that website. We had a virtual comment box, that interactive map, and webinar that people could access at any time. We really used this to start sharing with the community via It's Your City, via our social media channels, as an extension to our invitation to connect further with our community associations. The bulk of our time, though, was really going out into the community, going to farmers' markets, going to the downtown Fourth event, going to the Two Line opening, where these events are attracting hundreds, if not thousands, of people. And it was really a prime opportunity to share information, but also surface those questions that the community has about what a lower local street speed limit looks like in Bellevue. So we went to the Botanical Gardens for Earth Fest, talked to our Bellevue Diversity Advisory Network, our Bellevue Essentials Alumni Network, met with community associations, and again, going to where they were. I met with folks out at the... because that was most convenient for them. So really just trying to meet them where they already are. So one of the goals of our outreach is to identify the main themes of questions about lower street speed limit on local streets, and there are six that really surfaced as part of that. You can see on the screen here, and we'll walk through those in a little more detail. But there's general broad agreement, though, that people are driving too fast in Bellevue neighborhoods. No matter kind of what their question was, there is consensus that we need to try to slow people down. So the questions that we heard about, the kind of number one question that we heard about was, will this be effective? And the beauty of that in-person outreach that we did was that it allowed us to have that dialogue and that conversation directly with the person asking about that. I was able to share that we've tested this idea, this concept of a lower local street speed limit in Bellevue already, and it has proven effective at reducing high-end speeding, which is one of the key project goals here. So having that ability to have that dialogue was really helpful in identifying what the community is thinking about, but also helping to answer their questions directly. Looking at a lot, a range of data about how people currently drive on our local streets, we know that a lot of people already drive 20 miles per hour or less. There's a big range in kind of behavior, and that's a byproduct of our streets all kind of function a little differently and kind of communicate different things as it relates to how fast people can drive. But we will be adding additional speed limit signs as part of this effort, if it gets approved, to reinforce the speed limit, really tapping into the effectiveness that we saw in East Gate, where we added more signs in addition to what we just replaced to reinforce the speed limit. And there will be a few streets that we are proposing to stay at their current speed limit of 25 or 30 miles per hour. Another question that we got was, will there be improved safety outcomes? And yes, we saw there's an inherent relationship between speed and safety as risk is decreased significantly. And because we have seen the reductions in high-end speeding in our three deployments previously, we really do think that we'll see improved safety outcomes as part of this project. Will the speed limit be enforced currently and in the future? The best way for our speed limits to be enforced in Bellevue is for our residents to request police traffic enforcement via the Traffic Service Request Form that police has on their website. They will continue to receive those if this moves forward. But also want to note that in East Gate in particular, which was our largest deployment in 2022, and we saw the largest reduction in high-end speeding, there's no added enforcement as part of that effort. We think it came from the additional signs and just the direct communication that we had with the community out there. And then also, because we have a lot of data on operating speeds on Bellevue streets, we will be providing our police department colleagues with information about where there might be higher speeds on some of our local streets if they can do some added enforcement The other three questions, will trips take longer? As Vanessa mentioned, local streets generally serve short trips, so a slight reduction in our speed limit will prove negligible in terms of additional travel time. And also, we discussed the work on arterial speed management is not part of the project to council in 2025 to advance speed management on those types of streets, and we have some, a grant to help support some of that work. And then the last question, and it was sometimes framed as a you should do this and not this, is will there be traffic calming? And yes, there will continue to be traffic calming to encourage people to drive the speed limit, whether it's 25 or 20 miles per hour. This is a longstanding program that we have at the city to build things like speed humps and traffic circles. So we do have a commitment to continue to build traffic calming features to reinforce a 25 or a 20 mile per hour speed limit. In fact, we have five projects currently in design to reduce speeds on local streets, and we really see this as an extension of our traffic calming program, this kind of more context-appropriate speed limit for local streets. So I mentioned that there are a few streets that we're proposing to remain at 25 and 30. We do have a few local streets that are currently posted at 30 miles per hour. This map shows those 12 that are being proposed to stay at 25 and the five at 30. And I'm going to walk through kind of our thinking on this and a few examples to highlight why these streets were identified. The short of it is, we're really looking for the right speed limit for the right street. I mentioned that our local streets have immense variation in terms of their context and attributes, and how many people drive on them. And when we began this work and we were identifying, as Vanessa mentioned, we have local and arterial streets. Where are the local streets? We were honestly a little surprised that some of those streets that we have on our street network are local streets. Number four on your map, Southeast 32nd Street at the south end of Woodridge is a good example of that street. It's a kind of one-block segment that connects Richard's Road in arterial to 128th Avenue Southeast, also an arterial, and provides access to the freeway on-ramp there. That's a local street. Number two on your map, 134th Avenue Northeast between Bell Red Road and Northeast 8th Street, parallels 132nd, which is an arterial, and they share a lot of very similar characteristics. And these are, the street, you know, connects two major arterials, and there are relatively few driveways and intersecting streets along that road and a lot of these other roads that really communicate a 25 mile per hour speed limit compared to a 20 mile per hour speed limit. To illustrate this a little more here, just two examples. On the left here is 115th Avenue Northeast. This is up near... has a place for people to walk. A lot of these streets have sidewalk that we're proposing to stay at 25 miles per hour. And the, there's not a lot of driveways or intersecting streets, whereas if you contrast that with a typical local street on the right side here, there's a lot more mixing of activity that is occurring on our local streets. People walking the dog, people putting their trash bins out, parking, accessing their homes and driveways. So while these are both local streets, they kind of look, behave, and drive very differently. So that's why we're identifying just a few, a few select streets to remain at their current speed limit. Limit change, the primary mechanism is through city code. Chapter 11 dot 32, the speed chapter dictates what our speed limits are on city streets. So it's currently set to a default 25 mile per hour speed limit, except where otherwise posted. We are proposing to change that to 20, except where otherwise posted, and there is a redline version in your packet to illustrate this. So to situate us on where we've been and where we think we're going here, we're, we are seeking your direction tonight to return later on consent to approve that ordinance to change city code. That will signal to staff to begin design work, to change out all those signs and pavement marking legends, and then we're targeting implementation in the fall 2025 or spring 2026 timeframe. So we've been doing outreach for the past six months. We know that this is just the beginning of education and outreach, if this should move forward, and our kind of next goal for outreach is really kind of widespread saturated awareness. We don't want there to be any surprises when the speed limit changes, so the public is very aware of not just when, but also where and what streets the speed limit change applies to. The picture on the right is from our Surrey Downs deployment, and you can see when we do change speed limits, one, it's well-signed, and then we also have the orange flags that you see, which communicate a change from what was previously there, and then that pavement marking legend further reinforced the 20 mile per hour speed limit. So we think we have a good sign plan to really make it clear, no matter what type of street you're traveling on, that you'll know what speed limit it is when you're driving. And then with the education and awareness, we think there are going to be a lot of unique opportunities that we could pursue to get the word out here, looking into transit advertising involving our youth, and maybe developing a child yard sign art contest, which had been popular in the past, and then continuing to tap into our community networks and community associations and being out in the community. And then finally, what we like to do on a lot of our projects is... And then finally, what we like to do on a lot of our projects is an evaluative component to understand whether this change is, is moving the needle, whether it's really being effective in reducing high-end speeding, but also measuring community sentiment. So that'll be a part of this project as well. So we'll, we'll stop here on the direction that we're seeking tonight, but we'll open it up for questions before we get to that point.
Okay, thank you. Well, let's start with a motion, Deputy Mayor.
Of course. I move to direct staff to prepare ordinance, ordinance for consent that will change Bellevue City Code 11.30 speed on most local streets from 25 mile per hour to 20 mile per hour.
So, looking for any comments, like if we, if you oppose this or if you are not comfortable with it being on consent also. So Councilmember Newen House, let's start with you as liaison to Transportation Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for the efforts to, to do all the really important work of the outreach and, and, and awareness. Obviously, that's a, the big component of this piece. But I also have to share that I'm just rather skeptical on this, just human nature being what it is, you know? And we're talking about culture shifts here. You know, I think those that are already the speed limit, going below it will, will follow and, and adjust. I think those folks like the motorcycles that I hear drag racing down 148th every Saturday night will continue to do the drag racing. Now, I know that's not a local street. I know that's an arterial, but it's just an example that there, there are those that follow the law and those that don't. And I think if our goal truly is to create a culture shift, it's going to be a lot than just new signs. I think there will have to be more of an emphasis on the enforcement piece of this. And I think it's going to take more than residents having to be proactive to enforce some speed enforcement on, on, on their street. I, I would love to be proven wrong. I know you've got some data that shows that, but I'm just also looking at the price tag here, $600,000 in, in a, in a budget cycle where revenues are flat. Boy, I could sure like to use some of that in other things. I could think of a bike corridor on Spring Boulevard. I would love to get started on with $600,000. Actually, maybe throw in the $400,000 we're going to spend on the study on Bell Red once more. There's $1 million right there. What a great start that would be on Spring Boulevard if we could do that. So I hope, again, I'm proven wrong on this. I hope this does change some people's patterns and, and, and we see that reflected in the data when you come back, which, when, when do you think that would might be? So fall 2025, I guess early part of 2025, you know, implemented at that point. When will you have enough data to, for us to start looking at and showing that this is actually having a, a positive impact? And the signage for both on the street and on the actual signs as well? Is it going to take at least a year, six months, or do you think longer?
In the three deployments that we have already deployed with a 20 mile per hour speed limit, we were looking to about three months after those signs changed to allow for normalization of behavior to occur. We didn't want to measure speeds one day, one week after the signs change and then have short-term success and then it bounce back. So we would probably look to a similar timeframe for this type of deployment, allow the normalization to occur probably three months after and then analyze it probably about six months.
Okay, great. And then, and then the arterial that you mentioned in here too, sorry. When, when are you coming back to the council on, on the, on the arterial plan?
That should be quarter one of next year, and it should take between 12 months and 16 months to complete.
Okay. And for that, we already have a grant in place to, to pay for that as well? That one, did I see that in here? I thought we had a, a grant or a partial grant?
There's some speed study grant money, I think, for Safe Streets for All Grant.
Okay.
That will contribute.
Again, you know, being such a big fan and always understand the importance of all the outreach, I really appreciate it. I hope when you went to the, to the, what was it? The, the mustard seed, I hope you supported a local business and had a beer before you left. But really appreciate all the great outreach. Thank you.
So just to clarify, the motion on the table is about local streets. And so Councilmembers on, let's hear your thoughts.
Yeah, thank you. Well, first of all, I'm really glad that we're moving forward with this because, you know, one of the pillars of Vision Zero is safe speeds. And, you know, I think about the fact that when I drive and into Medina, it is really clear that 25 miles an hour is the maximum you're driving and that there are enforcement. So I do think there's a way to create the kind of culture change where higher speeds do create higher injuries if people get hit. So love the fact that we actually have a tagline about safety starts on your street and residential area signs, the blue signs, because I have heard from community that it does help for people as they drive down the street to know that this is a residential area. And so trying to motivate or incent people to know that kids are likely going to be out on the street. And so I think those things are really important. I do have a, a couple of comments or questions. One is double down on the education. I'd like to better understand, are we going to be partnering with the school district? It would seem to me that students would be a great example to remind parents to drive the speed limit and, and keep everybody safe. So that would be one of the things I would recommend. What I'd like to understand also is the higher-speed streets that you identified, the 25 and the 30, are they in the high injury network or in the high-speed streets? Because it seems to me that I, I have some questions about how these connector streets that are now higher speeds, I mean, I'm thinking about drivers getting confused about, I'm now I'm in 20. And so whether actually leaving them higher speed actually helps the entire transportation network or just saying that even if you're a connector street, if it's got some higher injury or more speeds, speeding, maybe we actually want to calm people down instead of doing that. I understand, and I don't want to slow anything down. So what I heard from staff is if you change anything here, it's going to delay. But I would like us then to make sure that when we come back in, you know, three, six months after the signs are in place and that reduction happens, that we're really looking at whether those connector streets should be 30 or 25, because there's a couple of them that look like they're only a few blocks. And then my, my last question would be maybe related to the enforcement that Councilmember Newen House was talking about. I think we also talked about starting to implement some transportation safety cameras. So do we anticipate that that might be an opportunity maybe to have some flexible cameras that might move around the city, just to kind of remind people that we really do take driving slower and calming our streets seriously from a, my questions. Thanks.
The safety cameras is going to be part of the Safe Streets for All Grant that we receive, and that's going to be occurring next year. And it'll give us a framework for figuring out how to implement that in an equitable manner. So that is work that's going to be happening in that, you know, we'll be coming back to the council with that.
Okay. And then those other streets that are the 25 and 30 and timing for...
We'll be, we'll roll those into the arterial speed study and reevaluate them.
Okay. And then the school district partnership?
We do plan to partner with the school district for like the child art contest that we were mentioning as a, an outreach idea. We would partner with the schools for that work.
Seems like they would be excited to do this.
Yeah, I, I think so. We've done similar partnering in the past, and it's, it's been very popular with the community.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Okay, thank you. It's all good stuff, you know? I mean, we all realize we want to be safe. So reducing speed limit is when we're, the only thing that troubling me is that we, we been asking these questions for a long time. I mean, it's not, it's not new, right? It's only that we are not realizing, well, we want to have Vision Zero, so no fatality. But doesn't matter what the goal is, it's always going to be for better safety. So I have no problem with reducing speed limit. The question is, it seems to me, you know, based on the questions we, we hear from this podium, we, we are doing what is incrementally. We are looking at one thing at a time, doing things that we have asked before, we tried before, we, we have done it to some degree before, but it's the same behavior. It's really, it's a, to me, it's a behavior science. We're asking, should it be go-to from this, should be done this way? We're, I'm no expert. I don't think anybody on this podium are experts, but that's what you guys, the staff, we need to look at, how do we fix this problem holistically, not incrementally? All right? If it's behavior, we need to figure out, how can we make people feel that they have to drive safely? And to suggest that is to drive slower, 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 until you get to the point of our expectation. You know, it's human expectation. 20 years ago, expectations, hey, it's okay, we don't care, we have no Vision Zero, go. We can, you know, lose a few people, that's okay. But now we're talking about Vision Zero. If, if we are serious about it, we need to be looking at, how can we stop it? Right? So all ways are necessary, and we have to prioritize. Councilmember Newen House mentioned, if we, where the money is coming from? What, how do we put all the money to do this? Well, then we have to weigh this against everything else we are doing in the city. You know, if the priority is that we need to do this, well, it's worth the money. If the priority says we have other things more important, then it isn't. But regardless of that, I'm just setting it aside, we need to have real, using behavior science, behavior science, how can we get people to drive slower, whichever way it is, wherever it is? How do we do it? We have to work that holistically. And I'm not sure what it is, okay? We can only give you suggestions. There's lots of suggestions you have. One of my suggestions is, I've, I mentioned that before, nothing to do with this particular direction. I agree, I approve that. But since we're talking about how do we do that, I've, I told you before that in many cities in the, in California, people put stop signs on every intersection or on whichever intersection, they want to slow people down. People will slow down, that's behavior. They're not going to slow to zero, but they will slow down. If they're going 50 miles an hour, when they know there's a stop sign in front, they're going to slow down. Okay? Ideally, it's zero, right? But they're going to slow down before they get to zero. So these are just all the ways and methods and means that we have to explore. So I hope that we will do that. You talk about arterial, next year we're looking at it. I would like to make all this together, looking all together. Not just address one, address the other one, and answer the question to that, answer the one to this, and we still don't know what's going to happen. Right? So let's do it holistically and see what we can do, figuring out human behavior, what are the things that we can do to make people slow down. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Hamilton.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Really appreciate all of the great outreach. I know there's a lot more to come, but I just think overall, this is really a great comprehensive effort, so very impressed with that. I mean, obviously, we've got a speeding issue. It's not just about street racing, but it is about kind of the everyday driving that folks do. I appreciate some of the comments that have already been made, especially fond of the safety starts on your street phrase. I think the more that folks hear that, think about that, the more we're going to accomplish our goals of making the streets more safe. I do think, you know, it's how we implement any kind of a new effort like this that's really important. So I think all of the signage is great, including some of the outreach that's already taken place and, and more that'll come. So, you know, it's how we handle it out of the gate that I think is important. I do think, as, as has been mentioned, that the enforcement of the new traffic laws, the new speed limits, is going to be a really important element of that implementation. And again, especially important at the beginning, when you're really hoping to make a bigger shift in driving habits that, you know, will hopefully catch and, and won't be as much of an issue going forward. So for those folks that for whatever reason just can't seem to adjust, there's got to be some more enforcement to help them. And I do think also working with schools, including local driving schools, is a really good idea. So I hope that they're included in, in the outreach that comes. But excellent effort, something we definitely need to do, and I look forward to seeing this come back on consent. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamilton. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm really excited about this, and really thanks for your work both on the three neighborhoods. I'm excited to see this moving forward, and I think it is a good way to approach things instead of doing everything at one time on this. And we've been working on this a long time. I want to say particularly, I'm interested in, the, the approach right now is that, I live in Woodridge, we lived in the south end at one time, and live in the north end now, and the main road goes through there, there's a high, there's a school there. But probably five years ago, we were having real serious traffic problems running through there. And what the city did was put signs up and put them down from, people are going more, putting it down, I guess five, five miles at the time, and put signs up and enforced it, and the community involved it. And nowadays, there's huge traffic on Richards Road, and people coming through there into, into Factoria. And it's changed so drastically. Of course, Richards Road is very, we're not going to ever put a, you know, 20 mile per hour on Richards Road. They do it themselves. But it's, it, it works. This was an example. At that time, if you actually are serious about and you give people information, they will get out of a neighborhood, running through that, onto a, a better road. So I think it's, you know, we've done this probably some other places. So this is not something we just gotten out of, you know, the air. And I really appreciate the way you're putting this together. I do have a question about the 25 mile hour streets, they're blue on the map. For those streets, like 115th Avenue Northeast and 151st Avenue Southeast, if, if we don't have speed limits at 20 miles an hour there, what else can we do to promote safety there? Well, particularly, you know, like Richards Road's a good example. How do we make sure that it, it works well, still going at 70, you know, more than 20 miles an hour?
We can look to see if these locations are on our candidate project list, and I think a number of them are. And so they might be potential candidates for a traffic calming project in the future. So we have our traffic safety toolkit, and we could look to see whether it makes sense to do a project there and apply some of our countermeasures for speeding.
Yeah. Well, it was just kind of an example, but it is, I think that's very appropriate. And it's, there are a lot of staff and a lot of money to do it all at one time. But I, I, I think it sounds very good, and I'm very supportive of it.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vanessa, John, Andrew. Thank you for a great presentation. I think this is one of the, since I have been here, one of the most impressive projects I've witnessed. I think you did a great job. First of all, your goal was very obvious, support Vision Zero that I completely aligned with. Then you have done a pilot study, you gather information, you see the concept is proving based on your pilot and data. based on your pilot and data, you gather community feedback, that was additional information that you gathered and these are all amazing. And then you went above and beyond and you had a very balanced and common sense approach. You didn't say all of them should be now 20 mile per hour, said, no, these five streets is going to be 30, remain 30, or these 12 is going to remain 25. So I really appreciate you didn't have a blank, say, all of them. So it was a very common, common sense approach, you went above and beyond, detailed, and then you are doing a great job to educating people and make awareness. I really appreciate that. And then you said also you're going to evaluate at the end, so we are going to hear back what would be the result looks like. I think majority of people these days, even going from work to home, they use map apps and I think that has signed, reflect the speed limit. I always look at that and I think that tells me, okay, in this part of highway or a street, it's not anymore 60, it's 50. So I really follow order from my map, so if we can reflect on the map ASAP, I think that would be a culture change, at least for the people who still look at the map because of the, I believe, ways tells me which route has less traffic. Overall, I am really aligned, I really appreciate your effort and looking forward to hear from your evaluation. Thank you so much, Mayor.
He may be one of the people we're trying to enforce. So like my colleagues, I really appreciate this plan. I am concerned about the people who, regardless of what a sign says, are going to go 60 miles an hour in a 20 or 25, 30 mile zone and so I am curious as to how we enforce and protect ourselves from those drivers.
Yeah, I think it should be noted that not everyone is currently respecting the speed limit and we don't view a lower speed limit as, that is going to solve all of our traffic safety woes. That's why we do have a safe systems approach to Vision Zero, that this is just an element of our safe speeds pillar, but there's also safe people and safe streets and another one that I'm blanking on, is that we need to approach things multifacetedly when we're trying to address this traffic safety issue. So that traffic calming program that has been a hallmark for the city for 40 years, we are, that's our bread and butter in neighborhood traffic and building those speed humps to further reinforce the speed limit or deploying those radar signs. So we definitely don't view this project as put up the signs and walk away, we'll continue to work, solutions to further encourage people to drive slower.
Appreciate that. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to bring this back for consent. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, terrific. Let's get through our second one before we take a break. City manager, would you like to introduce this one for us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. This next item is also returning to council from a touch with you in June, when the council initiated work on the land use code amendment that staff will brief you on tonight. And the amendment is intended to streamline and expedite project reviews and permitting in line with the state bill 5290 requirements and it also supports the work of the Development Services team in continuing to make improvements in the permitting process. Presenting from Development Services, we have Rebecca Horner, our Director, Jake Hesselgasser and Nick Whipple, Assistant Director of Code and Policy. And I will turn it over to Rebecca to begin the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Carlson, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Madalkeutian and Members of Council. My name is Rebecca Horner with Development Services. We are here tonight with a study session to discuss the land use code amendment regarding streamlining measures to align with Senate Bill 5290. And with me tonight, as mentioned, are Jake Hesselgasser and Nick Whipple with our department. We are seeking feedback from you tonight and hopefully direction to bring back, to move forward further into the public engagement process and to bring back a land use code amendment for a public hearing at a future meeting. Our agenda this evening is to provide you some background and for the public who's listening, to review the land use code amendment and process and finalize with receiving your feedback and requesting the council consider giving direction to move forward with public hearing process. And with that, Jake Hesselgasser will go over the first slide or first topic.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers. Great to be with you again this evening on this topic. Just wanted to provide a bit of background and I wanted to start with talking a little bit about continuous improvement as it pertains to streamlining permitting. Development Services has been committed to continuous improvement for many years now, dating back to the early 2000s when we visioned paperless permitting and then achieved that major milestone in 2019. More recently, we've been focused on putting the voice of the customer at the center of our improvement efforts, so our customer experience program, the Bellevue Development Committee, or two forms where we do that. We've heard a lot about permit streamlining, even outside the confines of the state legislation and are working on a number of initiatives in that arena and looking to the future and continuing to dedicate ourselves to continuous improvement even outside the legislation. In terms of Senate Bill 5290, as a reminder, just a bit of background here, this was introduced in the state legislative session in 2023. It amends the Local Project Review Act, RCW 3670B. We're talking mostly about land use and environmental permits here. The goal of the legislation was to create efficiencies and streamline permitting with a special emphasis on housing related permits. There were mandatory permit timelines and penalties in the way of potential refunds of permit fees for not meeting those timelines. Was signed by the governor on May 8, 2023 and went into effect at that point and there were several deliverable dates beyond that. The Department of Commerce has been developing guidance and that has been coming out as they proceed with their work. Key components from a procedural and administrative perspective, Nick will get into this in the land use code amendments, but some examples include prohibitions on site plan review for interior alterations, are clear. There were amendments to definitions and new terminology that was introduced in the legislation, procedural amendments around the completeness check process and then requirement to publish reports, performance reports at both the local and the state level, increasing transparency into the permitting process. From a policy perspective, we introduced this tiered framework the last time we were in front of you on June 11. These are the commonly referred to shot clocks. What we're looking at here is the time where the ball is in the city's court, not necessarily in the applicant's court, and these are measured by calendar days. So 65 days when a public notice is not required, 100 days when a public notice is required, and then 170 days when both a public notice and a public hearing are required. Jurisdictions are subject to potential permit fee refunds for not meeting those shot clocks unless they are to adopt three streamlining measures, which we received direct, introduced those with the preliminary budget. We also conducted a detailed timeline analysis that we shared with you back in June. The findings of that included resource availability being a key component, which is why we prioritized those streamlining measures in the preliminary budget. There were special circumstances and complexity factors for some of the larger, more complex permits and environmental permits and then we did see alignment with some of our current process improvements, so again, recognizing the things that are outside the legislation that we could be working on. We did receive direction from the council back on June 11 to move four of the 24 permit types we analyzed from that 100 day bucket into the 170 day bucket and those included design reviews, master development plans, critical area land use permits and shoreline substantial development permits. And for the next portion of the presentation, I'll turn it over to Nick.
Great, thank you and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City Council. So for starters, the proposed LUCA land use code amendment is included in your packet as Attachment B. The LUCA while dry is really important. It will now codify some of the permit timelines that are provided for in Senate Bill 5290. It includes the three categories of review time and implements the June 11 council direction to move four of the land use permit types from the 100 day category into that 170 day The LUCA also updates language around submittal requirements and completeness check process. The code, to our webpage for up to date permit submittal requirements. This is important because cities can only make a decision about project completeness based on the list of submittal requirements available to an applicant while they're preparing their application. It also includes changes to procedural requirements to determine permit application completeness, which is also important because under 5290, permit shot clocks start once an application is deemed complete. So the LUCA is refining our completeness check process by clearly defining when the 28 day review period starts and then implementing a quicker, more efficient intake process to initially screen applications before they are forwarded to review groups for a more thorough completeness check. The proposal also adds a definition, nonresponsiveness. This is a new term that's used in Senate Bill 5290. Responsive for 60 days, an additional 30 days may be added to the review clock. So since this is a new term used in that Senate bill, we needed to develop a term and definition to help us with the administration of the land use code. We're also proposing to include some additional clarity around the DSD director rulemaking. This has been a longtime request by stakeholders, so the LUCA provides an update to better clarify the use of director rulemaking. So directors' rules are binding administrative rules about the codes that Development Services administers. However, it's important to note, they do not establish new or different policy, they're usually a tool that just provides better clarity on terms or different kind of aspects of our code that aren't as well defined or that have really special circumstances around them that could benefit from a rule that's posted to the city site for clarity. So we have had a rulemaking tool, but we have not historically used it, so this is an effort to kind of define the process around how we start to establish these rules so that we can make better use of that, again, to be responsive to some of the customer needs. So right now, we are using a rulemaking process, but it's done more internally and so using a more formal process, we believe provides better transparency and consistency for our customers. So one of the changes with the code amendment is to replace the public hearing requirement with a longer comment period, so changing the comment period from 14 days to 21 days. We do anticipate that shifting the public engagement to this format and removing the public hearing requirement will enable more meaningful public engagement. As written comments, they do tend to provide more detailed information and offer us a path for follow-up and dialogue that's not typically provided in a public hearing that occurs on one night for usually about one hour. This approach also aligns with regional practices around rulemaking. Both King County and Seattle use rulemaking as a tool and keep a library and post that online and they do not require a public hearing as part of that. We believe that we could provide some broad outreach with some of the listservs that we've, using the different outlets like the Bellevue Development Committee, using our listservs that go out to neighborhood associations to really get the word out when a director is considering making a rule around a certain code provision. The code amendment also establishes when a project could vest to a rule and then also these rules can be appealed, so it will also lay out the process to appeal a director's rule. So a few examples of director's rules. So with clarifying implementation of green building incentives, we know that sustainability approaches and programs are continuously evolving and so the appropriate level of detail that might be for the land use code is establishing a green building or a sustainability amenity and then relying on a director's rule to address the very specific approaches that would be implemented as part of that amenity. Also, we've had some questions around how we are calculating floor area ratio for single family homes. There are certain exclusions in the definition, but we run into some challenges when implementing that, so having a director's rule to lay out these exceptions in a more transparent way, offering up visuals to help people understand what we're meaning for calculating FAR is what we see as a good application of director rulemaking. And then explaining building height determination when we have sloped sites. So we get sites that have unique circumstances that aren't always well addressed in the code, so offering up a rulemaking process to provide examples of when we could use building, that factors into reviewing a project against building height requirements, we also think is useful. In terms of our outreach and engagement approach for this code amendment, since this is a land use code amendment, we are following our process for noticing requirements, so putting a notice in the weekly permit bulletin, asking you all to hold a public hearing to accept comment during that time as well. We will be launching a project webpage and then working with various stakeholders, both internal and external. We have brought forward this code amendment to the Bellevue Development Committee that was at the last meeting and we also shared the move of the four permit types to that 170 day bucket prior to the June 11 council meeting when you all provided that direction to us. And so tonight, we are asking you all to review the code proposal and consider directing us to schedule the public hearing, at which point you could take action. And that the new shot clocks would take effect on January 1, 2025, that's the time at which we would have to start reporting to Commerce on our performance. So with that, Mayor, oh, I also just want to remind you all that at that June 11 meeting, you did retain processing of this code amendment, so this would not be sent to the Planning Commission, so with that, we are seeking your direction.
Great, thank you so much. Let's start with a motion, Deputy Mayor.
I move to direct staff to prepare the proposed LUCA ordinance for public hearing and action at a future meeting.
With that, we'll open it up for discussion and questions. I'm going to start with Deputy Mayor Madalkeutian, who's on to the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. A great job, thank you so much, all of you, Jake, Rebecca, Nick. I wanted to show my appreciation for amazing work that you guys do is the permitting, so I always want, I appreciate your transparency, efficiency and predictability that we are going to bring to our permitting. I have a two question and then one concern. We are doing about, talking about permitting, have we considered partnering with any external tech companies maybe, or consult to explore ways that AI or automation may assist with the application completeness review process, without sacrificing any accuracy? That's my first question. Then hopefully, if you are going to eventually, not just because of this state law, you are going to get to the place that our permitting is going to be so fast and reliable and predictable, are we also considering if that maybe overwhelm our existing infrastructure and how those two may go opposite of each other because we're all advocating for a very fast, reliable permitting process, but what happens if that extends in the opposite side of the spectrum, maybe overwhelm our existing infrastructure or disrupt the local communities? And I think my last question or concern is, I completely understand that why is the written comments period for the director ruling? You mentioned is enhance the quality and depth of the feedback, especially when we are talking about the technical matters that can be challenging to address verbally during the short time of hearing. But I am still, I wanted you guys even maybe expand even more, why are we, I'm sure we are not taking away a public participation by any means, but I wanted to just get some more explanation and ration, why are we removing the public hearing? Why are we removing the public hearing parts? So, thank you, Mayor.
So I can take the last question, and then Jake, as the Director of our Business Services Division, will be in a perfect position to answer your first two. So we actually believe that by modifying from public hearing to public comment is actually a better outcome for our residents and stakeholders who want to be involved in the process. And that's because we have evidence and we've experienced that participation in a public comment process receives more comments and participation from the public than do public hearings. So it, and as Nick mentioned, it does allow for more meaningful dialogue and feedback because that process does allow us for a response and also allows our constituencies to participate in a longer period of time. So we actually think it's better outcomes for our constituency and our stakeholders, and that's why we recommended it. And with that, I'll let Jake take the first two.
Yeah, so thank you for the questions. Partnering with external private conversation with IT about how we would go about doing that. There's a lot of activity in the private sector around AI right now, tremendous opportunity, also some risks that we have to be conscious of, thinking about how we use that ethically in the permitting process and where that might fit in, and also the procurement rules around that. So I guess the short answer is we have tech companies contacting us and we're working with IT on how we would go about actually building those partnerships. So looking forward to that, and it's something that excites me in the permitting process. In terms of your question about infrastructure, just to clarify, are you talking about system infrastructure or more community infrastructure in terms of, you know, roads and things of that nature?
So the question is, if we are doing this streamlining permitting that is focused heavily on housing development, how do you do or do you mean doesn't lead to unintended consequence such as the fast tracking of development that could disrupt the communities or could maybe overwhelm the existing infrastructure? I'm really looking at, we are going to be very, I'm thinking about very long future and we are very fast in our permitting process, and now we have lots of developments.
Actually, I'll take that question. I was thinking more in terms of infrastructure, technology, infrastructure. So you have just gone through a comprehensive planning process. We have evaluated the impacts through that process. And when we go through a land use entitlement process, the applicants are mitigating their impacts at that time. So in terms of concern around development occurring too quickly, I think that's been evaluated, and they do need to mitigate their impacts through the process.
Thank you.
Well, I'll go next, and I'll just say, you know, we initiated this in June of this year, and this is part of an effort to reduce the cost of housing. And so I'm very supportive of this. Time is money, and I appreciate you moving so rapidly on this. Councilmember Stokes.
Well, I'll start off by saying I agree with the mayor. That's very well put on how this is working. This isn't a question, but I did want to recognize that how forward-thinking this was for our Development Services staff put it online so much of our permit process in advance of the pandemic. I mean, did you see it coming or something? But that was really a smart and lucky move to have these pre-COVID. That let businesses and residents keep things even in suspended animation. And I think that just shows that, I mean, it's good sense what you're putting forward and making the process even more predictable, but always remember that if we delay things for some kind of reason, but it's not really a good one, we don't move forward as much as we can, because you never know what's going to happen, you know, next week in a sense. So I think, and I think we're doing that a lot. We're going forward, we have it planned, and we're lucky sometimes that we do something that isn't, you know, pushed aside because of other things that happen. But it's, I think it's really one of the really nice, very, very positive progress we made and the whole program is gives us really good impressions out there in the public, and people believe that Bellevue will help them move forward on what they want to do in the processes and things. So just, I think it's really, really good.
Thank you, Councilmember Stokes. Okay, Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, for this good work. Yeah, I think this is a critical effort, and I fully support it, look forward to the upcoming public hearing and moving forward. And it's one, it's an effort that I think is so important, and I'd like to see us expand on it as soon as possible. And as the deputy mayor said, you know, I imagine us getting to a place where we really set the standard, and I'd like to move forward with that, because I don't think that we accomplish our critical housing goals if we don't use fifty-two ninety as an important starting point and improve upon it. And I just think throughout this, we process and all the growth that's coming to the city, we just have to keep asking ourselves, what is the plan to be sure that we can permit and build the housing that we desperately need? And then from that, how does our permitting process properly support that effort? And two, I just noted in the agenda memo, and this was mentioned earlier, that the intent of fifty-two ninety was to further consolidate, streamline, and improve project review and permitting with an emphasis on housing development. And, you know, to reduce the amount of time it takes for compliant projects to receive approval. I mean, that is just the key. It's just so important that we do that. I think what you've presented here, it is going to be a big help, but we're going to have to do much more to get ourselves in position to deliver our housing, on our housing goals. And the work you've done, I think, on the rulemaking process, very solid, just always worth mentioning, I think, with the rulemaking process, that it's about implementing the policy that has already been set. And I know that that's been mentioned, but I think it is especially important, and the more the better. And then the fact that our rulemaking is consistent with what goes on in Seattle and King County. I think, you know, one system or a system that's as similar across the region, the better, so that, you know, developers of all types aren't having to learn one system in one city and one in another. So that all makes a lot of sense to me. So look forward to next steps. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. I always appreciate what you guys do. Bellevue is the best. You know, we don't have any shortcut. We do the best for the city, for the public, for the best professionally. And we all have, you know, agreed that one of the way to increase house so I kind of understand. And so the city council, I think we all agree, we need to do whatever we can to build more, okay? And then I assume that the state legislature feel the same way, okay? There's, well, let's build more, that's lower cost. Except, as we know, the details are very the road to hell is paved with good intentions. So these are all good intentions. So I really appreciate Deputy Mayor's very thoughtful question. Do this, we use technology, speed up, okay? The question is, you are the professionals. We understand this. We want to be sure of quality control we can maintain. So we don't want to, just because we're the rush, that's because we want to have low cost. We do want to do a shoddy job. You know, I used to work for Boeing. I don't anymore. Look at Boeing. The best airplane there was in the world. Now they're building pretty crappy airplanes, okay? So because of cost. Build the cheapest airplane they can build. Build a lot more, lot coming out of the assembly line, but that's not what we want. So I would ask you that question, which Deputy Mayor asked. I want to have you think through as assurance, because your professionalism of Bellevue, we can accomplish what the intention is from all of us still maintain, what the integrity, quality we want. If you say yes, I trust you. If you have any questions, well, let's
So I think what Councilmember Lee's asking is if this bill, the implementation of this bill jeopardizes the quality of construction.
It does not change any of our ordinance standards, which are aligned with the vision and the policies in the comprehensive plan in the city of Bellevue, so we do not anticipate that to occur.
I am not sure what Mayor has asked, you know, she asks you. I'm asking you what I've said during the last couple of minutes of my concern about quality, about how in our integrity of building the right kind of stock housing. I don't want to have a house suddenly forced apart, or it's not meeting some things, does not working, okay? If you answer this, yes, I support this.
Yes, it does not change our standards or ordinance requirements.
All right, thank you. I got my answer.
Councilmember Newenhouse.
Thank you. Thank you, Rebecca, Jake, and Nick. Great presentation as always, very excited about this implementation of fifty-two ninety here. I think part of this, and correct me if I'm wrong, Rebecca, but the director rules were not part of fifty-two ninety. That's your, you're just adding that on, but I'm so excited about that, and I feel that's kind of being missed a little bit here, the importance of that. Other municipalities use that. We never have. To me, this is a game changer and really developer community and others have been asking for it. I think it gives us a lot more flexibility, answer questions, and be able to move faster and quickly, and all the things that we've mentioned here tonight about being fast and predictable, et cetera. That's going to have, that's going to, I really think, again, be a game changer. So thank you for going above and beyond just what fifty-two ninety is asking us to do. One question I did have on the director's rules, though, is about the appeals process. Does that change at all with the director's rule, or is it still kind of the traditional appeals process? Or has that changed at all, or the structure of that changed at all?
I do not believe so. I will ask Nick to confirm, but my understanding is this is the typical appeal process with those type of applications.
Correct, and we'll be able to provide a good thorough response when we come back for a public hearing as well, just to detail that out in more
Okay, so there'll still be the traditional appeals process as known today? That doesn't, okay, great. I also like to focus on, and I appreciate your additional context around the public comment and extending that versus the public hearing. In this context, I agree, I think it's the better approach. Question on the, on the fee refund. Is that automatic, or does the applicant have to put in to have that refunded? Or how will that work in order for that refund to happen if you don't meet the shot clock?
Can you answer that question? I don't believe the legislation actually specifies, Councilmember Newenhouse. If we were to implement those three streamlining measures as you've directed us to, we would be exempt from permit fee refunds for a period of time and then have to analyze our performance and ensure that we're complying with the legislation. Otherwise, we have to adopt additional measures at a later date.
But I guess my question is, who is tracking when we miss the shot clock and a refund is due to the applicant who submitted the permit?
I think those are procedures that we haven't really ironed out the details on yet. I don't know that we have specific guidance on it yet from the group that was put together by the legislature. And I hope that we never have to.
I hope so as well, absolutely. Think, you know, working that out and having a clear plan for what that looks like, I think is important, so look forward to getting update on that later. In terms of the sequencing and the different buckets, the sixty-five and the hundred and the hundred and seventy, I'm just curious, as you showed on slide nine, you removed or took out those four permit types and put them into the hundred and seventy day bucket. Is the goal to, at some point, put that back in the hundred day bucket? As I think some of my colleagues have shared, you know, we want to be faster and more predictable, et cetera. And certainly, technology may play a big role in us getting there, but I just wonder if that's kind of a secondary goal, that's something that we can aim for a year or two from the implementation of this program in general to speed up and eventually move these four items back into the hundred day bucket?
This amount of streamlining improvements that could lead us to that direction, so aiming to do that is probably a good goal. We hadn't adopted that goal at this point, but the reason that we are recommending these is because the scope and nature of Bellevue's development applications, because of the urban nature of our city, is very complex. And so while we certainly can aim for that, I don't know what that capability is, but we'll see as we adopt these streamlining measures in the next couple of years, what we can get to.
Well, as we've all probably heard many times before, if we don't write down our goals, we miss our goals. So I think we should, even if we do miss it, make it a goal to get those four back into the hundred day bucket, or else these kind of conversations get lost and it slips. So I'd like to see it as a goal personally. I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I think that'd be a great goal to aim for in the coming years, even if we slip by some amount of time. But again, this is great work. I'm so excited to get this, all of this implemented, speeding up these timelines, getting housing built, which we are all passionate about and all want to see happen and create more and more inventory in our market is hugely important. So this is really important work, and I really appreciate the way, the thoughtful approach, but also the quickness that we're looking to move on this is really appreciated. So thank you, all three of you. Thank you.
Councilmember Sun.
It's actually great to go last because I get to hear comments from my colleagues, which I very much agree with, you know, time is money. And I think that this is the kind of work we continue to do around continuous improvement and to be more efficient and effective, because that's actually good for both our staff as well as the folks coming in to get a permit. Especially appreciate the clearer definitions that you were talking about and expectations and predictability. I think those things are important, absolutely support the process on the director's rulemaking. And I also, I also agree with your comment about the fact that extending the public comment period in lieu of a public hearing. The question I do have there would be, are all of the comments then transparent to other people so that even if there's not a public hearing, they would have access to be able to see what all the comments are that are coming in from the community? Let me just, I'll go through my comments, and then you can comment on that one. And the other question I would like to use from my colleagues' comments, the fifty-two ninety is streamlining all the different permits, not just the housing ones, is that correct? So although we are making sure that especially the housing ones, and we've talked about whether, you know, housing or affordable housing should jump the line or have some priority, which is not part of this right now, I just want to make sure that these streamline and deadlines or shot clock dates are good for any permit coming in. And then my last two comments. One is, really appreciate the comment made about AI. I know that as part of the AI Advisory Committee and the Coalition, there's definitely a lot of cities that are looking into AI for permitting, and I know that Sabra is right in the thick of that group. So I look forward to pulling some of that work forward as well and moving some of that ability to have that available for staff, for them to be, to work more efficiently. I don't get the sense that AI is replacing staff at all, but really being, maybe walk alongside to be able to do some kind of preliminary scrub or review. And then lastly, this one probably just a comment. When I saw the piece about the completeness check and kind of the timeliness of the response whether we have the resources to help them to be in compliance, because we certainly don't want to find them non-responsive. So I guess that would be my question is, as you think about the budget before us for twenty-five, twenty-six, whether there's sufficient resources to be able to walk alongside and help applicants so we don't get to a non-responsive state, but really helping them to hopefully, as quickly as possible, get to that completeness check. check. So comments and questions, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments, noted them, and we'll work on those. I would say, related to the benefits of the streamlining, it is for all permits types that are listed in the shot clocks and the buckets, and so rising tide lifts. I'll have Nick respond to the transparency of the comment process.
Sure. Thank you for the question, Councilmembers Sun. So with the process, you know, as we mentioned, the land use code already authorizes this rulemaking process, but we haven't used it. And so what we are envisioning is there's some staff report that's produced as part of the process, and typically within that, we would discuss any public comments that were received during that period, and noting kind of how those were factored in to part of the decision on the rulemaking. So I believe that that's how we would probably incorporate that, but it is a new kind of process for us, so certainly consider how else we could kind of daylight some of those comments received as we develop procedures around how to implement this.
Yeah, I think that would be really helpful, because the one thing I can think of in a public comment would be that everyone is able to hear each other's comments, whereas if they just provide public comment outside of the hearing, what would be the timeliness of the summary and information, and if they don't see their question, is there still time within the public comment period to be able to submit a comment? So, thank you.
Okay, and with that, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, terrific. So let's take a break. We'll regroup at eight o'clock. Okay, so we're moving on to our budget. City Manager, would you please introduce this budget item?
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Tonight's budget discussion is the second of three study sessions, and covering the six strategic target areas. The presentation tonight will focus on vibrant economy and high-quality built and natural environment, and council will have an opportunity to have questions and discussion after the two sections. So the first section will have a presentation and opportunity for questions, and then the second section and opportunities for questions. So we're joined tonight by a host of our departments to cover these two strategic target areas. We'll have a kickoff by John Riesha, our Chief Financial Officer, and then Emile King, Director of Community Development, Development Services Director, Rebecca Horner, and Michael Shiasaki, Director of our Parks and Community Services. All three will be a part of the presentation this evening. So with that, I'll hand it over to John.
Thank you, City Manager. Mayor, deputy mayor, councilmembers, welcome to our budget evening and budget discussions. Tonight is the second in our series on the strategic target areas. We'll be honing in on two tonight. We will have opportunity to receive and respond to questions. We will offer to you now that if some of the questions have a little bit more in depth, we'll try and refer those to Memory Bank, but we will try and answer questions while we're here tonight and get as many of those quickly answered for you. With that, we'll be talking very briefly about the calendar and then our two strategic target areas. July 9th was our first public hearing. Introduction of the City Manager's preliminary budget was on September 17th. On the 24th, we had our second public hearing and discussion of resources. We're in October, which is primary learning and deliberation time, as we lead into November 12th for our final public hearing and potential adoption November 19th. After tonight, we'll have High Performance Government and Thriving People in Communities next week. And with that, I will turn to, for this information session, to first, Emile King, but as we get there, sorry. If you're following along at home or in your budget book, section 4R for operating, 5K for capital. This segment of our STAs has about $40.4 million of investment. Of that, about $37.4 million is in the base operating, about $2 million in adjustments, and about $1 million of capital improvement program. Vibrant economy is largely led by development services and community development, with a little support from finance and asset management. And with that, I will now turn over to Emile King.
So this STA really focuses on what's gonna make Bellevue have a diverse and thriving economy. So we're gonna go through some examples in the preliminary budget. We first want to highlight what we've been doing over the past two years. We really want to build on the successes that we've had over the past budget period, so I'm gonna highlight a few of these for you. The first was the launch of Startup 425 Accelerator Program. We had 37 participants, and this included a track for non-tech and small businesses. We also furthered our Workplace Development Program, and this had a focus on relationship and small business support. We completed a retail study with implementation through the current Lucca work, as well as the Business District Program. We launched the Bellevue's first Cultural Facilities Grants Program that recently came to council, and this is gonna support the creation and retention of arts and culture spaces in Bellevue. We established the Tourism Promotion Board, and the work is underway with council having approved the work program and the budget for that. And then finally, we have partnered with Visit Bellevue on the Bellhop Program, the Lake Cruise Pilot Program down on Maidenbauer Bay, food tours, and marketing efforts as well. As we go into the different topical areas, I do want to note that this strategic target area does focus on the pure economic development, or things that we have in our larger budget that do address things like public safety, mobility, land use planning, and others. So as we focus in on this, think of the pure economic development items. The first one is tourism, so looking forward, Bellevue will continue to grow as a tourist destination, and this is for visitors across Washington, national and international visitors to Bellevue. The Tourism Promotion Area is gonna add about $7.5 million for the banium, to work on the work program approved by the council, and this is gonna include things like successful hosting of teams and watch parties for the 2026 FIFA World Cup that'll be coming to this area. And then lastly, the partnership with Visit Bellevue will be expanding the service area for Bellhop, and we just hit 5,000 for that program with Bellhop. Also with Visit Bellevue, we'll be doing more culinary events, and we're gonna highlight our many cultures with this work. We're gonna have a focus on the Japanese market, based on the upside potential of that opportunity, and then we will be also having a new downtown Bellevue to Sea Tax Shuttle for people who want to go down to the airport directly from downtown Bellevue. The next area is about creative economy and public art. The art, as council knows, is a vital part of the city, and it's essential for residents, businesses, and visitors. The investments in arts and culture have a significant multiplier effect for the city, so we are looking to continue the investment in Bellevue, especially to get out-of-town visitors to come to Bellevue. There's a large spend per visitor that the city does benefit as they come and visit the city. The funding for arts and grants through an annual process and art acquisition will continue, and we're also gonna continue that Cultural Facility Grants Program, where we just did those first allocations. From an art standpoint, we do have an installation scheduled for 2025 out in the Crossroads area, and there's also gonna be art installed out at the 130th area in Bellred, and also in the East Rail area, we'll be looking for site-specific installations as we think about East Rail in the Spring Boulevard District. From a support for businesses standpoint, we're gonna take time to update the current economic development plan, so we're gonna shift it out to the 2026 to 2030 window, and this really is gonna have a focus on small and mid-sized businesses as we update that implementation plan. We're also gonna extend the city's work with the Old Bellevue Merchants Association and the Bellred Arts District Community Alliance, and this is gonna seek to improve public space management and programming in those areas. And we're also gonna expand things out to Bellred, Factoria, as well as Wilberton. And then finally, this target area is gonna advance redevelopment of the, at the Bellred Station, and this is gonna help implement the Arts District Plan, as well as further aspects of affordable housing and small business development in that area.
We are very excited about this proposed new program to support small businesses and public space activation through our direct communication with our stakeholders, as well as Economic Development, who works closely with small businesses and those seeking public space permitting. We understand we could provide an additional benefit through this program to provide additional permitting assistance aimed at streamlining the permitting process for these customers. We understand these customers are less experienced with our permitting system and just could benefit from some additional support. So, and it's a multi-department coordination effort with Economic Development. I envision this as like a one-stop shop for small businesses and those wishing to activate spaces. If approved, we intend to work closely with those stakeholders to shape the program to meet their needs specifically. The program does anticipate one family, some additional consulting dollars. And with that, we would like to receive your feedback and answer any questions you may have.
Okay, great presentation, thank you. Councilmember Lee, you have represented our city on many economic development boards and commissions. Would you like to start us off?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As we know, that we have been through this COVID, and you know, that affected all of us. We have new norms, I think people are doing business differently, and businesses are here, operating differently as well, so the whole city has been affected. So the Economic Development has been working very hard, admirably, trying to recover from the effect, and I think they've been doing a great job, you know, human's job. And so, you know, I would compliment them. The one thing is, you know, I don't want to be over-critical in the sense, but I just want to focus on a couple of things. One is, we recover, we've done very well, but Bellevue still, you know, we still have vacancy in office. We still don't know what the economy is gonna look like. We still don't know how business is gonna be conducted, and the small businesses are still gonna be, you know, in trouble. They're still trying to figure out how they do business. And so there's a lot of uncertainties. We have tourism, that's another thing, you know, one of the feature of economic developments, how is our hotel doing, all that stuff. And we've done a great job to get, you know, TBA, the tourist, you know. So I believe that these are all good things, and we're collaborating with our eastside cities for in the Start 225 and various other things. But what's, I think, missing is, we need to look at the real big picture, big picture of economic development, how do we attract and retain business here? How do we use our strengths, which we already have in the city of Bellevue, on the east side, in the region? So we are now, you know, like it or not, we are the talent capital, the global talent of the AI. We listen to AI. AI is the thing that's gonna be, we cannot stop it. It's gonna, and so we are talking about cloud computing. All this are the talent that we have, because we just, Bellevue, the whole Pacific Northwest, you know, we got the fortune of the location, the people, it's all here. So somehow, we need to attract these folks from Silicon Valley, from other places. They are migrating out of where they are, they're looking for other places to be more favorable in whatever way. And so the most important is the talent. Second most important is the place where they can bring up families, well-being, you know, where they want to live. So all these are factors, and I think we need to showcase, highlight, figure out how to attract these people. And the company we have located here, we are very fortunate, Amazon's coming here. You know, they're gonna bring 25,000 employees, but at the same time, they haven't done that yet, but we're becoming. But at the same time, they can also leave very quickly if they want to, depending on policies we have, depending on the talent we have, depending on many other things, like parks, you know, recreation, education, schools, all that's part of it. So I think we lack that for one reason or another. So we need to focus on that, we need to really work on that. One of the things I would suggest, you know, I mean, I'm no expert on all that stuff, but I've been around doing that for a long time. The first time I come to the council, become a councilmember, we have all the priorities for the city. The first one is economic development, and it's always been the top, but we have had emphasis, we have had resources. Sometimes we don't even have Economic Development Department. We have maybe one, two, three, four, we attract people to come here, and it has varied in terms of its emphasis, in terms of strategy, and in terms of plans. So I think that you want it to be successful, this budget can allow us to really focus on the mission, on the vision, on what we need to do, and develop a plan and strategy to accomplish the things we believe will keep Bellevue on the table. So I would suggest, we need to think about how to have a separate dedicated department with mainly economic development in mind, to develop a strategy plan and have the adequate resources, have the adequate purpose, you know, with a re, so we need to restructure the Economic Development Department with repurpose, with re-resource, so that we can make sure that we attract companies to come to the east side, to Bellevue, collaboration with the regional asset we have, Ramon, Kirkland, you know, all the, including Seattle, very much so, but we need to be working toward that one goal. I, that's considered our budget, to include adequate resources with the purpose in mind, to attract technology businesses and keep them here, not just attract them, but make sure they stay here, make sure they have plenty of opportunity, make sure we understand what they're talking about, make sure we communicate, make sure we meet their needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Any comments?
I think there's a number of small pieces within that, but it might be best for us to try and unpack that during a Memory Bank response, and try and pull out three or four aspects that I think we heard relative to attracting and retaining Economic Development Department and focus on retention, heavy focus on retention, and our planning efforts around the Economic Development Plan.
Yeah, seems like a lot of that's covered in our quarterly economic development report. Okay, anyway, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Great presentation, as always. John, thank you so much for everything you do for this budget. Emil and Rebecca, thank you so much for all of your input. I also kind of have similar comment that Councilmember Lee has. I believe that Bellevue is very fortunate that we have a major tech companies and the tech hub that we are that drive our economic growth, and I really appreciate to see all of the effort you have done and you are going to do in diversifying our economy. You mentioned supporting small businesses, local entrepreneurship, 425, the workforce development that you have in the budget, collaborating with Bellevue College. I am just wondering if our past and current initiatives have enough scale to really move the, what was our metric, how we are doing? Again, this is perfect for the bank thingy. I don't need any answer right now. Again, this is perfect for the bank thingy, I don't need any answer right now. And so, are we really, all of these efforts, are they really focusing on a startup, focusing on sustainability and green technologies? Are we really bringing some support in creative industry like arts, media, design? Are we seeing the result of all of these investments that we are making? I am not sure, maybe I'm not familiar, and finally, I just wanted to ensure that all of these investments is going to support entrepreneurs from diverse socioeconomic backgrounds and underrepresented communities. So, I would look forward to an answer in the Memory Bank. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmembers on.
Thank you for this presentation. I'm super excited about this because there's a number of things in here that we've been talking about over the last few years, and, you know, I echo my, the comments from my colleagues about how do we amplify even more of the efforts we're doing? So, I do have some clarifying questions. You mentioned updating the, the Economic Development Strategic Plan, so would that be in 2025? Because the plan was last updated in 2020, so that's one of my questions. And then, when, I, I really support the streamlining permitting for activating public spaces. I just want to confirm that that would also be to potentially activate City Hall and other city-owned facilities, so that it's not just parks that are subject to weather conditions, and better understanding how much can we put more money into keeping City Hall open on more weekends to be able to activate or community centers and other city-owned facilities? I think that would be helpful. The other one is, even though we're streamlining permitting, you know, what I learned when Ari came to me about the Bellevue Kids Business Fair is that there is a, still a significant permit fee associated with it, so I wanted to understand, does streamlining equate lower permit dollars? And then, is there a way to have a small pool that would be available for these very small groups that have ideas for wanting to activate some of our different city facilities? And whether there's something possible for that? Love the fact that we're having an airport shuttle from downtown hotels, so thank you for that. I understand that it was just an announcement that there's going to be six games played in 2025 for FIFA Club World Cup, and the two line won't be open yet connecting to Seattle, but I just wonder if there's some thought or funds about how we might leverage that opportunity in '25 to showcase Bellevue for even more potential activation in '26? So, plus, Maricel, that's doing that work, how's that going? Is there more that's coming out of that in terms of how we might reach even more of the community? And then, lastly, I think we never have quite enough funds for the arts, so I just wonder if there is any additional dollars in there for more pop-ups, programming, performances, to really support even more the, the arts and artistic community? So, I think those are all my questions. Wow, this was a very, a topic near and dear to me, so, thank you.
These are all good comments. Any quick answers you can give?
Yeah, I wanted to, to talk a bit about the ED Plan update. So, the, the ED Plan is a five-year plan, and it, it goes through 2025, so we want to bring back to this council this winter the launch of the 2026 through 2030 ED Plan. So, we'll be looking back at how we did on all of the, the, the goals and milestones in that plan, and then it's going to help us prepare for doing the next five-year update.
So, that'll kind of answer the question from Councilmember Lee and, well, and Deputy Mayor, actually, everyone's comments so far about just how do we even go bigger?
Right. How are we doing and how can we look forward at new things in the next five-year period?
Okay.
Okay, great. Oh, go ahead.
And then, to answer the two questions about streamlining permitting, we are going to work with the stakeholders to specifically structure the program around the need. I presume that will include all public spaces, including City Hall. That, I'm sure, will be feedback that we get from Economic Development, who's a stakeholder. So, I think the answer to that is yes, and I think the goal is activation of space downtown and all over the city. And related to costs, so, a couple of weeks ago, we were here before you talking about our fees. We do have a cost recovery model, which means fees pay for services. We have noted through our customer experience survey and working with our customers who are less experienced, like are targeted with this program, they need more assistance, and so they end up paying more hours through that assistance. This program is fully general funded, so they won't be paying for that additional permitting assistance. I would recommend that we use this two-year budget to study if there are additional needs once we've utilized the program for a couple of years to see if they still need additional permitting assistance. I presume they're going to see a lot of relief in costs just by this assistance that we'll provide to them. Yeah, I think that would be great, and then, we can then also study whether, I think some may need some infrastructure upgrades so that they don't have to bring in all their generators and plugs and a bunch of different things that does add costs versus whether the city starts to think about some of our facilities that doesn't have all of the AV equipment and things, that would be helpful. So, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Newenhouse.
Thank you, and thank you, Emil, Rebecca. Great presentation as always, just a couple of comments and, and questions, some of them similar in breadth as what's been said already, but there's a lot to like here. You know, as, I think myself and Councilwoman Stokes, we've advocated and others have advocated for the arts strongly, and there's, that's, plays a big role in this. I love the small business streamlining, that's fantastic, although Rebecca, will that also include like signage for like restaurants as well type of permitting, or what, what sorts of permitting? If you can give me just a greater idea of that.
We'll work with the stakeholders, but I anticipate any small business who needs permitting assistance, so they also need sign permitting.
Okay, because that, that would be great, especially for those, you know, immigrants who maybe want to open up a restaurant, as I've seen time and time again, and just as, as you've, you've, you've mentioned, that they might, this might be their first interaction with the city and already got, to go through that permitting process. So, I think us providing that, you know, that excellent service, that white glove service to get them through the process, help them understand it, will be really, really important, and have them coming away feeling good about their interaction with the city, I think really pays dividends down the line as, as well, and furthers our reputation as being a business-friendly city. So, that's really great to hear as well. The, the cultural facility, if we're referring to the multicultural center that we've been talking about there, is, does that, is that still without walls and just programming, or is that talking about an actual physical entity? And if so, I think we're at the point where we need to start thinking about funding, and, and, and I know this is part of the budget process, but, you know, some actual thought around how we are going to fund this if we truly still want a multicultural center.
Yeah, so, the, our, our Cultural Facilities Grant Program, so that's the, the 1.8 million that, that council just gave direction on, the, the cross-cultural facility, I think that's one that could go into the Memory Bank to, to get a bit more information on the game plan for furthering that idea, but it's a separate one from what I was covering in the vibrant economy, just to be, just to be clear.
Okay, thank you for clarification. Okay, thank you for that. But, as been mentioned today, oh, and of course, the tourism piece, and I'm so glad about the partnership with Visit Bellevue, there's a lot to like there, and, and it will continue to grow and pay dividends as well, so that's great. But it's been mentioned previously, what also struck me was just scale. These are important, it's, it's a yes and, we should be doing all these things, but we also need to keep in mind scale. And in, in today's world where businesses can, I am, you know, that can benefit us, that can also hurt us, you know? There's some people that might not remember when Expedia got up and left very quickly. Thankfully, we had other companies that we were able to attract, but it can happen that quickly, and it's great that we've got Amazon and 25,000 jobs, but top of mind for me for Economic Development is our constant relationship with the business community, going to them, talking to them, what are their pain points, what do they love about the city, what can we do better, what's their feedback to us? There's so many different ways that we can learn from that, and from that, further develop in terms of attracting even more companies. Yes, technology, AI, very, very important, but we've also talked a lot about diversification as well, and I don't really see that in this, in this plan, so we'd like to see a little bit more in terms of what the plan is for diversification of our economy, where, I mean, there's a lot of benefits to a tech-heavy economy for sure, but, but we still want that diversification as much as possible. And as Councilmember Lee said, I'm, I'm not the expert, but certainly, there are other things to look at in terms of maybe healthcare, renewable energy, other things that we could be looking at that might be a good fit for Bellevue. I'm not saying manufacturing is the best place for Bellevue, I think other sectors could be. So, that would be, I think that would be a, a great thing to, to, to look at and further emphasize. Again, not being critical of what's on here, these are good things, but I think we need to keep our eye on the ball, those, those core things that are going to keep you, it's really going to bring in the revenue that we need to keep up with the services and the infrastructure that we need going into the future. So, there may have been a question there, if you want to answer, great, but Memory Bank's okay too, but thank you so much for your, your work on this, and especially thank you again on the small business piece, that is so important, and I feel like it gets lost too often, and they will, I, I think our small business community will really appreciate the emphasis that, and the approach that we're trying to really meet them where they need us, and, and further develop that relationship with them, because we want the small businesses here in Bellevue, so thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Okay, I'll go. It seems like streamlining of permitting is a big, major theme this year, and I appreciate the work you're doing. It's really exciting to see advances in that. So, we got, we all got an email from the Bellevue Farmers Market, and I don't know which tranche this sits in, whether this is something, if it's part of our Economic Development, it is a, I don't know how to categorize it, but it strikes me that if they were part of Visit Bellevue, they wouldn't be begging for money. We would be anticipating what they need to succeed, and we would be providing that because we all value the farmers' markets in Bellevue, and it makes me sad that we are giving them $3,000 and they need $10,000. That's a huge distance between what they need and what they're getting. So, my question is, how are we going to address the needs of something like that that's valuable to our city?
Yeah, we can add that to the Memory Bank and do a, do a concise write-up on areas where we have been able to, to sponsor entities like that, and maybe if there's a tally of unmet need on that front, so you can, council can weigh that as part of your deliberations.
Okay. Do you, can you tell me what tranche it goes under, like who oversees the Bellevue Farmers Market? Do you know off the top of your head?
It's a, it's a collaboration between multiple departments, but we can, let's include it under, under the vibrant economy heading for now.
Okay, I'm glad you don't know, because I don't know either. All right. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I appreciate the comments that have been made so far on this. I think we're actually in a, a very, very good space. I think the city, the staff, the council have all, in the next, the last five years or so, really upped the game on how we're going forward. We're taking advantage of the opportunities we have, and I think we have the capacity to go even better coming into this, and there are a lot of things we're doing, making some changes already in terms of funding, you know, in culture, and that's, that's something that is, people really love, it's something that's very important, and we are changing, the same thing with parks and all this and others, is changing the way we fund things and what we do on that, and it's, puts them up in a different grade, so I think we've, we've done a lot with that, it's very important. I think we're in a place where we're, we're really going forward in a number of areas, and we have the, again, the opportunity with the growth in the culture, the growth in the acceptance of, I mean, the change in the population when we have events down here from even five years ago is just amazing, and we're actually, in, in terms of getting projects done and things that are going on, both by the city and by the public, it's just amazing again. We're doing things, you know, getting something like the East Rail going and getting that whole, it's, it's just an amazing thing. So, we're, we're really set to do a lot on this. What we need in terms of the budget is to really have a conversation on each one of these, how can we make this better, what can we do with it, how's it, how's it coordinate? And I think there's a lot of possibilities, since if we do have that conversations, we learn how to do a little better in terms of collaboration, maybe we're not over, sometimes two people trying to do the same thing, which is not a lot of that, but a lot of things we can do, but I think we, I think we're already in a place, I'm not saying we'd like to go, I think we're at a very, very high level, and this is not the same place that I certainly came to. That's a long time ago, but it's just amazing how much, how the city has changed, and now we're talking about the growth and, and how do we get people, how do we get people in houses, all these different pieces that come into it. But I think really in the, and back into the, to the economy, we have the businesses here, they're coming here, they want to be here, and we're, they're working together, they're working with the city more than they ever have, so I think we're in a really good spot, and what we're looking at now in the budget is what does it take to make this work? And the thing like, talking about, you know, the, the farmers' market, I mean, we're talking about going up to $10,000, and we're, we're, we can't do that for some reason, that, those are a little, I think we're, have the open idea of how we can work and we can work together and say, we need to do something in the cultural area. You know, maybe we don't need to build a building, but we need to build a community, build, build a cultural outlook all over the city, and so, we, we're tackling these things, and we've made some really good changes in the way we approach things, some parks, again, for an example. We're actually moving those things forward and getting stuff done quicker, and, and we, I, I think we're just at a place where we can, if we keep going forward and, and not get too hung in, well, we're not doing this right, or maybe we should do something else. I think we have a, we're putting this together, and I, I've looked through, you know, this very, this pretty carefully, and I think the budget is, is really exciting, and, and I think it's very, very good. We can always, you know, do something different with it, but I'm really looking forward to having this, this conversation going on through to the end of the year, and we're setting ourselves up, I think, very well for the next 10 years, and we, we just need to work hard on that and not get bogged down in the little, little details or kind of, well, we should do something that we should have done a long time ago, we need to focus on what we have now and where we're going on it, and I think if we do that, we're going to be an even more amazing city, and the staff is just doing a tremendous job, in my opinion.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation and taking us through this. I think, you know, we're all pretty clear about the limitations of this budget, but I just continue as we go through this to be impressed with the ideas that have been presented. I think we're being careful but impactful along the way, so I'm, I'm really impressed with, with all of that. And considering the limitations, I'm glad that we're still able to focus on workforce development, programming in Bell Red, in Old Bellevue, and support for public space activation. Also, I just think increasing investment in the funding and planning for arts programs and arts grants, I, that is just critically important. Those investments need to be made, even if we aren't able to do them at the level we should be, we should be making them. And I think we're, you know, as we should be always focused on supporting our vibrant economy, but what we'll need, and I'm, I'm hearing this from my colleagues, I believe, we'll need to be ready to make more investments as things improve in the near term, and so, while obviously this is a process we have to continue to work through, this budget process. process, look at what do we do in the mid-by and what do we do in the next budget, considering the limitations here. I think this is really solid work. I don't want to get too far ahead, but, you know, we need to take a look at these things. And I think as Councilmember Nguyenhaus said, you know, how are we going to pay for the things that we want to do? I just think we need to, to begin to focus on that soon for the things we just aren't able to do right now. And then too, as was mentioned, you know, adding a code and policy person, I think that's a great idea. I appreciate the thrust behind supporting small businesses. And I think, you know, the more of these efforts that we undertake now, the better shape we're in as our city economy improves and the regional economy improves. So these are great building blocks we can build on, but soon we need to look at how we're going to pay for those things that, that we can't now and that we do need to build to the next level. So this is great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that's that, and we move on to the next topic.
Can I make one quick comment?
Sure.
Thank you. I just want to echo your comments about the Farmers Market and also you talked about Bell Hop and expanding Bell Hop. Let's not forget we expanded Bell Hop to get to the Farmers Market.
That's right.
So I think it's only appropriate that if we are able within the budget to support them a little bit more, I think that'd be great. So, thank you.
Or include it with Visit Bellevue, whichever.
Yes, whichever.
All right. Thank you for that.
Amen.
Yes, Councilmember Lee. Yes.
Can I add one more item? I really appreciate you talking about Bellevue to the airport connection. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Zahn said that too, so I think we're all in agreement on that one. Okay, let's go on to our high-built, high-quality-built natural, natch, sorry, I'm looking at natural environment strategic target areas.
Thank you, Mayor. Joining us is Michael Shiasaki to take us forward. Again, we are, we'll do a bit of look back and look forward. And as we come in, if you're following along, Section 4T for operating, 5M for capital, and the project explorer in this particular area has a pretty substantial capital, set of capital investments. As we talk about it, it's actually one of our larger areas of investment as a city with about 285.9 million of investment, percent of our investment, which if we're looking at that, it's about 149, almost 150 million in our base operating budget. There are about 11.7 million of adjustments that are proposed within this budget, and the remaining 45% or 124.6 million is capital improvement. It is that, those capital investments. Interestingly, this is not just three departments that delivers within this area. It is, does include parks, community development, development services, but also includes delivery through utilities, transport, so it's got a lot of broad representation in the delivery. And with that, planning for growth.
So the first area we're going to focus on is the planning for growth as part of this STA. And again, I'm going to cover briefly some of the accomplishments over the past two-year period. So I want to highlight the, the Wilberton Vision Comprehensive Plan Amendment was adopted back in July by council. And next week, we have scheduled the overall comprehensive plan update and the Bell Red Comp Plan Update for adoption, so well ahead of the, the state deadline of the end of the year. We also continued implementation of the 2017 Affordable Housing Strategy. This included partnerships with Arch, affordable housing on religiously owned properties, the Housing Stability Program, and a series of code and policy initiatives. Third, we advanced the Environmental Stewardship Initiative, and this included elements about the climate vulnerability assessment, the Wilberton Sustainable District, tree canopy work, launching a new energy smart east side program, and then the Clean Buildings Incentive Program were also done. And then lastly, in May of this year, Mini City Hall celebrated a grand opening and a tripling of space out at Crossroads Shopping Center. So looking forward at what's in this budget, we have the Wilberton Land Use Code is in process, Development Services is doing significant work on that, and scheduled delivery of that to council is anticipated early 2025. The comprehensive plan implementation is going to be a big effort over the next couple of years. This is going to include middle housing code amendments, legislative rezones, and the creation of a series of new zoning districts that are going to implement the comp plan. The Bell Red Look Forward Code Amendments are going to take place in 2025, and these are going to build upon the strong vision for that area and further in that corridor served by the light rail. And then finally, the, the planning for our regional centers is going to continue on. We're going to be recertifying downtown Bellevue as a PSRC Regional Center, and we're also going to explore Bell Red as a potential Regional Center as well.
Major theme, streamlining permitting. We have included resources in this budget to address needs, to reduce permitting timelines. These are not the only streamlining measures that are underway, but there is specific resources identified in this budget to address contingent positions. Those are positions that we hold to fill when there's a need and also on-call contracting assistance for the same purpose, to address increases in workload and be able to step up very quickly to address those. And we have a streamlining measures that do require code amendments, so we've included a full-time position to address the workload demands with the land use planning initiatives and code amendment processes.
As we shift over to community spaces, I want to hone in on the Grand Connection. So this upcoming budget does include significant funds to further the design of the, the I-405 Crossing. It includes roughly $15 million in the budget to take the 30% design up to the 60% design level, and it would also support working on the governance, planning, and public-private partnership fundraising campaign as well. There would also be continued work to advance the metro and Lincoln Center redevelopment sites that the city owns, and this would interface with the Grand Connection and advance the city goals for that, those, use of those properties. And then finally, placemaking along the route would occur to support interest in activation of the public spaces, and these have been occurring in the, the past year and a half and will be expanded in the '25, '26 time period.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the City Council. I think in Bellevue, I think most of you would agree that the park system is an integral part of our high-quality-built and natural environment. For us and you, back, here are several key accomplishments over the past two years. So we continued to grow the parks and open space system, adding about 24 acres across four neighborhood areas. And a couple of examples of these acquisitions are 16 acres just north of Newport Hills Woodlawn Park and a wooded ravine near Vasa Park just above Lake Samamish. This past spring, we opened Bellevue's newest park in the Bridle Trails neighborhood. And just last month, the council adopted the Bellevue Airfield Park Master Plan Update that included siting the new aquatic center. We continued to enhance the city's urban forest by planting over 8,000 trees throughout the park system. We also restored parks, and to be more specific on what that means, so maintenance funding was restored at 11 neighborhood parks, including tasks like added irrigation and increased frequencies for weeding, litter pickup, and mowing. We restored year-round service to 10 park restroom sites, as well as keeping Santa Canes in place year-round at 11 other sites. So all of the restrooms and the Santa Can locations are available for park users year-round. So, excuse me, in looking ahead, our work plan is driven by our continued efforts to implement two parks levies. First, there are two projects left in the 2008 Parks Levy, and then the program areas and projects in the 2022 Levy. And I just have to say, we are very appreciative of the ongoing support by Bellevue voters as we continue to develop, improve, and expand the park system. The list of CIP projects in the preliminary budget, it comes from our capital project objectives in the Parks and Open Space System Plan, which is our long-range plan that was based on extensive community engagement. Earlier this year, the Parks and Community Services Board reviewed our CIP budget proposals and developed a recommendation memo that's included in your meeting materials for this evening. Our work in the past two years has focused on launching a series of projects included in those levy programs, and this work continues into the next biennium. And I'll cover this more in detail in the next few slides. So high-quality parks facility has long been a hallmark of our park system. 95% of Bellevue residents rate the appearance of Bellevue parks as good or excellent. And I'll say even more importantly, 93% of those folks rate the safety of parks and park facilities as good or excellent. Mentioned Maintenance and Operations Levy was targeted towards restoring maintenance level, levels of service standards. In addition, the draft budget includes ongoing funding for parks renovation and refurbishment projects. And one of the examples is the image on the left. The project show, shown is at the Crossroads Community Center, and it was just this past winter when there was a frozen pipe that broke and leaked throughout the, the main community room, and our resource management staff were able to contain the water, they were able to clean that up, and quickly obtain permits and conduct extensive repairs to those impacted areas. And the community center was up and running within only 90 days. So trails are consistently the most-used element of the park system, and 80% of Bellevue residents use our local trail system. When asked what they would like to see more of in the park system, trails is consistently the number-one answer. The preliminary budget with support from the 2022 Levy restores a programmatic CIP project that funds trail development consistently over each year of the CIP. Trail projects will range from improvements and expansions within our large open space parks like Mercer Slough and Coal Creek to small neighborhood connections that will help achieve our goals of providing all Bellevue residents with walkable access to parks and A key to increasing walkable access is acquiring land and developing small neighborhood parks, such as the project shown on the screen in the East Gate area. The parcels shown were acquired in the past two years, the sites at the corner of 147th Avenue Southeast and Southeast 38th Street. The design process for the new park is, has just begun with permitting and construction planned within the upcoming biennium. With funding from the 2022 Parks Levy and support from Amazon, we launched the pop-up off-leash area program in 2023. We have since made three of these sites as permanent off-leash areas and added a temporary site right next to City Hall, and we will continue to expand off-leash offerings. And we'll be trying out several additional pop-up off-leash area sites this next year. The first phase of Maidenbauer Bay Park has quickly become, you know, a huge asset for the whole city since we opened it in March of 2019. As we know, Maidenbauer Bay Park is a part of the Grand Connection. Funding to continue this park project is included in the preliminary budget, and work is underway now to determine what is the next phase of park development. And this is just from our early Phase II design work and based on the, shows what the iconic Western anchor of the Grand Connection could be, and it, it looks kind of west from Main Street and 100th. So more to come there. So the draft budget also includes funding to continue design and permitting of a new aquatic center at Bellevue Airfield Park. Partnerships are often a key element for developing significant park projects. Examples from the past include the Bellevue Botanical Garden Society, the Bellevue Boys and Girls Club, and the Bellevue School District. Building on the recent siting decision for a new aquatic center, this budget supports continued site-specific design work for the aquatic facility in partnership with the community and splash forward. And a final highlight, a IP project that was developed in close collaboration with the city's ADA compliance program staff. This program adds funding each year to accelerate removal of accessibility barriers across the park system. And with that, I will hand the presentation back to Emile.
The next topic we have under this STA is creating a livable city for all. So I want to hone in on creating vibrant spaces and neighborhoods. So this preliminary budget includes work to complete the Crossroads and Newport Great Neighborhoods initiatives that were just launched just in the past month and will be continuing on into 2025 with that work. And in fall of 2025, we'll also be launching the East Gate and Factoria Neighborhoods as part of that same program. The Neighborhood Enhancement Program will begin its road, next rotation in the Bridle Trails and Northwest Bellevue Neighborhoods in 2025, as well as continue to build 35 Neighborhood Enhancement Program projects that have already been chosen by the neighborhoods under past cycles. The Keep Bellevue Beautiful Program will continue. This really fosters community pride by organizing volunteers to go clean up litter and also report abandoned shopping carts for quick removal. Since it began, we've had close to 600 volunteers and removed approximately 300 bags of litter from Bellevue streets. And then lastly, the Adopt a Street Program is going to be connecting with 41 businesses and neighborhood adopters who will share a two-year commitment to the upkeep of the city streets across Bellevue. The next area under this topic is environmental stewardship. The budget includes an update to the ESI Plan, so that's another one of our implementation plans that is due for an update. We'll be looking at the 21 through 25 Plan out to 2026 to 2030, and we hope to launch that with council this fall as well. The preliminary budget includes maintaining the ESI staff and resources for implementation. So during the, the last budget cycle two years ago, the city made significant investments in sustainability for the community and for municipal operations. This budget also includes investments to, to support key programs. These include Energy Smart East Side, so this is our heat pump program. We've been able to get significant grant funding to go install heat pumps across Bellevue. The Clean Buildings Incentive Program has supported up to 275 buildings in complying with the Washington State Clean Building Standard. And then lastly, we've been developing an implementation plan for the district. On affordable housing, we are going to be launching another implementation plan update. So we'll be taking the 2017 Affordable Housing Strategy and this fall, launching an effort to take that to a seven-year plan for this one, so the year 2026 through 2023. This is pretty critical to both meet our new starting point target that the council has discussed, so looking at 5,700 units over a 10-year period, and also to build upon the good work that we've done implementing the current plan, the next right work, and figuring out what are going to be the best near and midterm actions to help the city achieve the new, the new housing target and meet our other housing priorities. The budget also includes the creation of an office of housing. So the, the goal of this office of housing is to focus on acceleration of implementation of the housing work and to really take forward the new policies in the comprehensive plan. It's going to help support development of at least 100 affordable units on average per year. And in the reserve, we do have $40 million that are pegged for affordable housing and looking at our city. affordable housing and looking at our city-owned properties for deployment of some of that money. And it also increases the ability to help us pursue development and funding partnerships with others in the community. The Office of Housing is going to use four staff that are currently funded positions in community development and then repurpose one existing position in the city manager's office.
To provide a little bit of background on the council's next right work efforts as it relates to the next budget item, the, there were several policies or goals in our work efforts that addressed housing, affordable housing costs, namely reducing fees specifically, reducing costs to build affordable housing, and the, it identified that the program was specifically needed to address housing between the zero and eighty percent AMI, area median income. That led to the council's adoption in 2023 of a fee reduction program, Affordable Housing Fee Reduction Program. And as you can see here, eligible product, projects include one-hundred percent affordable housing at or below that eighty percent AMI level, also included permanent supportive housing projects, emergency housing, and homeless services uses, and is a fair that the, those projects be affordable for the life of the project. The amount of the reduction, it's a hundred percent reimbursement of those review and inspection fees. There are some limitations noted here. We told you in 2023, when you adopted that program, that if there were adjustments needed to the amount, that we would come back to you. So that has led to the proposal in the preliminary budget to provide for a one-hundred percent increase in appropriation for that program because it has been of a high interest. And with that, I will turn it back to you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. Councilmember Hamilton, let's start with you.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for all the good information. I think the planning for growth work is very solid and very exciting. Really liked the theme tonight of streamlining. You know, it's not about shortcuts or reducing requirements, but about clarity and alignment and speed, and so really, really pleased to hear that talked about quite a bit tonight. Just a couple other comments regarding the Grand Connection. I think we need to continue to make progress on the Grand Connection. It's going to be transformational for the city, and, you know, it, not only does it help create a vibrant city center, but it bridges a divide between one of our new neighborhoods, which includes East Trail, and a lively, fun downtown job center. So I think we definitely have to keep moving on the Grand Connection. And just think in general, too, you know, none of us need to be convinced about the quality of our parks and the importance that visitors and community members put on parks, so very much in support of our parks and the investments that have been suggested here. Do also want to just highlight the creation of the Office of Housing. I think that is probably the smartest, most impactful thing we're doing in this budget. And while I know there's details to be worked out, it's really my hope that the Office of Housing's primary focus is on ensuring we meet our housing supply and affordability goals. And we need a full range of housing by our city to build the full range of housing types that our community wants and deserves. And very excited to see more about the Office of Housing. I think, too, the fee reduction program and increasing the funding for that, absolutely in favor of that, and hope, too, that we continue to look at ways that we can use programs like that to increase housing. So, thank you.
Great. Councilmember Newenhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to try and use something different than streamlining, but that word has been used so often tonight, so maybe aerodynamic. I don't know, I'll come up with something here. This is, this last part of this presentation really was, in my mind, very much on point. It's redoubling our efforts on the council's priority and things that we're already working on that we need to continue going forward, you know, be it affordable housing, be it the, Mr. Shiosaki, I love the fact that you pointed out the maintenance piece, such a huge part of our, of our overall parks, plan, and open spaces, and having all those amenities that too often we take for granted, but it's, it's amazing to me how quickly my phone goes off if the bathrooms are locked, or they're not cleaned, or the grass is really long, or we're not keeping it up anymore. So it makes, it's, it's part of, I think, part of the makeup of Bellevue residents. It's, we're, we have a lot of pride in our parks and open spaces, and when we don't keep them up, they notice very quickly. So, so that, you know, that needs to be called out, and I'm very proud of that. And all the great activities, both existing and the new ones, I really appreciate your work in particular on the dog leash areas. There were a few hiccups, I think, but, but overall, much-needed added benefit to our city. Love the growth above the Maidenbauer Park and Phase II there, a lot of great stuff. The Office of Housing, so I got a question regarding that. So this, and no one disagrees that, you know, we need to, you know, continue our push to create more and more affordable housing in our city and housing in general. But this, to me, still feels like a bit of a shift, and I wonder what this does to the dynamic of Arch, for example, since it seems like we're taking a more direct approach to ensuring housing in our city. So how does that, with Arch or other providers of housing, if we are now going to start funding and employing people to work in this new office? Are we sending a direct or indirect signal that we're going to start tackling this issue more directly ourselves?
I think the relationship with Arch continues as is, so there's no change in that relationship. As I noted, there were some very thoughtful things that went into this proposal to really accelerate the work that we're doing on some, some sites in Bellevue, some city-owned sites, having more city discretionary money to use, and really taking advantage of the new comprehensive plan, some of the code updates, and really pushing both housing supply and affordability. So it's really a compliment to the good work that Arch already is doing, and it's not a change in that direction.
Okay, okay. Love the, as we've heard, the aerodynamic, sleek, efficient permitting that we're now seeing in, yeah, exactly. So this is, this is a great presentation, and there's really not that much to add because it's got everything that I think we agree on and want to see continue and further in our city. So I'll stop right there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, this is, this is a really good conversation. I think we've, glad we're having this one. And this is probably, all the things combined in this, is one of the most needed and effective and amazing thing that we can do as a city. We're in a place, again, we're in a place to do that because we've been working on it for a long time. We were just kind of chuckling a while ago, we talked about the aquatic, the, the, the park, and, and then Maidenbauer Bay. We did that a long time ago, and it's still being worked on. We're going to get the aquatic center, and that takes time, and on it, but we have continued on that, and Bellevue is moving forward on it, and that's, that's really great. I think that, and the thing with affordable housing, too, that's something that, I mean, I've personally been working on that for a long time, and, you know, we are, actually, we're doing what, what I, we all know that we needed. We need to have an affordable housing strategy, and then, okay, we can do that. Now we have to actually put it in place, and that's what we're doing. And you're doing this, and you're putting this into the budget in a way that's very, very positive. And I really, I really like this idea, and back to Councilmember Newenhouse's question, which is a good one, because we need to continue, because in terms of doing this work, it's going to take not just us, it's the, it's Arch and everything else, and what we're doing is adding to Arch, and I think that was, it was good for us to focus on that, and I appreciate your mentioning that. But I think at this point, we just need, we, we're getting the plan, you know, we're talking, the next right work piece is, is a good idea, this housing, affordable housing strategy, and I'm very, very, I know we're all very proud of the city actually stepping forward in Bellevue, saying, we are, we're going to be a leader in affordable housing, and we're going to, we're going to do what we've been talking about for a long time. And kudos to the staff. I mean, we wouldn't be here without their working on this and really going forward and listening to us and, and coming back on this. So I think we're, I think this budget is, is very, very good, and we're going to have to work real hard to make it work, but we, I think you're getting us in the right direction, and you're listening to what do we need to do this, and we need this, and how do we make it work? And so I think it's, it's the best I've seen put together of strategies on, and strategies are always the things you, and so I commend you very much on putting this together, and I think we have a, have a path in this to go forward again. But the other thing that's good about it, it's not just off on the side. And, you know, we worked on parks, but parks is always, we always work together with other things, too. So it's, we're doing a more holistic approach to what we need in Bellevue for the next ten, twenty years. And I think this is a good piece on it. I really applaud your, the work on this and what you put together on it. That's all I have to say.
Great. So I'll go ahead, and this is such a good news story. It's, you know, Michael, you were able to show more than anybody right now the work that has been done in the past, and then showing us what we already have the funds to do in the future. That is so remarkable for a city like ours that's growing so fast to have carved out that much public space for parks and green spaces, and I'm just so grateful to the work you've done and that you continue to do. I was really, as a physical therapist, I guess, former physical therapist, the accessibility barrier removal, I mean, that's, that's wonderful. When I first got on the Parks Board, parks were not equitably accessible by everybody. So it's really gratifying to see that change and that you're continuing to put an emphasis on that with the older parks, so thank you. The Office of Housing, I mean, we, we've talked for years about what we could do with them, and we've talked about, you know, creating a land trust of sorts, or we could create affordable housing that people buy the building, not the land, but we don't have the staff or the know-how to know how to implement that, and it's really, I'm so grateful that you're going to hire somebody to guide us through a process where we can actually do something beneficial for the community with those properties. And then with the, Rebecca, with the fee reduction program, has anybody been a beneficiary of that yet, or is it too new?
We do have several projects in process right now.
Okay, can you tell us about those? Just several.
There's several. We can put them in the memory bank.
I would like to know about what we're rewarding with that efficient process. Okay, great, thank you. Let's see, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, and Mayor. This is very impressive. I think the mayor pointed out, you know, the Parks Department. That's why the city's called City in the Park, don't forget that. It's purposely designed with the staff, with the council, with the mayor. We have a plan, we have a fifty-year plan, maybe even longer, that we've been acquiring properties, we've been doing things necessary, we have a planned purpose, we know what we wanted, so we have the right structure to make it happen. Okay, so that's important, and that's why we're talking about success, and that's why, you know, it's important, well, I want to go back to, the whole presentation is very, very good. That's why the economic development is important, okay? That's why you need to have the appropriate structure to make it happen, otherwise you won't. And to do that, we have to have the budget to make this structure so that we have a plan, we have a strategy for the next fifty years to make it happen. So it's proven, it's the pudding, we're looking at it. So I just want to make the pitch, City in the Park. Housing, this is going to be our next important agenda, City in the Park. We got you, thank you. Everybody's been talking about housing, we need housing. Housing is all kind of housing, okay? And that's why I am very intrigued, and at your proposal in this budget, the Office of Housing, that's the structure you're providing to address a very important topic, which is going to be for the next fifty years. If you just do it, hazard, well, I'll do it this year, do it maybe next year, it's not going to happen. So have the appropriate resources, that's why the budget is important. So I appreciate that Office of Housing. I'd like to explore that a little bit more to see it's going to make it happen. It's going to be appropriate, it's going to have the right resources, it's going to follow the council's vision, it's going to follow the people's need, you know, and if we do it right, it's going to happen. So I would like to use that as a model, emphasizing again, to do the things we need to accomplish, that's important. So that's why the next item to me important is, without a healthy economy, nothing matters. The parks aren't going to have money to buy properties. House has to do it, we don't even have staff to do it, you guys won't be here. Economic development is important, so we need to provide an appropriate structure, provide the right resources. That's why I want to have the budget to consider that. If we are serious, if we're for real, let's do it, okay? So that's the structural picture I'm talking about, but there's a specific one in your presentation. You talk about community spaces. Okay, does that include cross-cultural centers, space? Yes? I'm a little confused, because in the description, it may be next week, but you talk about it here. Should we talk about it now or later?
I think we have the, the cross-cultural center we're going to add to the memory bank to get more information on that, that specific initiative. This, this presentation, we're focused more on the range of community spaces.
Okay, so, so there will be a session, talk about cross-cultural center, right?
We will add, we will add more information about that, and yes, there is funding in this budget to take some of those next steps.
Okay, so you're not including the community spaces, but we have opportunity to talk about it.
Can we ask the city manager to report in on this?
Thank you. Councilmember Lee, and John, please correct me, but I believe that that is covered in the strategic target area next week. Yeah, so Councilmember Lee, we will be back next week to talk about that.
Okay, I will wait. So I hope everybody heard me, structure is important, and the most important piece that we talk about, City in the Park, we talk about housing, it's going to be the future, and I want to talk about, in order to make those things happen, economy, economic development is important. So let's consider that to include, this is the opportunity for us, include in our budget to make it happen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say first, congrats. You guys really were practicing the whole thing, you were handing off very well together on the slides, like, that was a very impressive three of you over there, I am really impressed. There are so many good stuff here, thank you. There is a direct correlation in the budget of these two strategic area and your presentation, by the way. The first one, budget was, your presentation was a little bit smaller, and this one, yes, and this one, the presentation was longer, the budget was longer, and I understand completely that for having a vibrant economy, there are lots of other strategic area gets involved, maybe that's why is the reason. My only question for memory bank that I don't even need an answer is about environmental stewardship, and I, and I know you have, you are doing a lot in that space, but how can And I know you are doing a lot in that space, but how can, in this budget, we can do more? And how are we addressing our risk goals? We have a very goal for our environment, and I am not sure if you are going to that direction, if we are great, if you are not. What are these, how this budget is addressing that? So I would love to see that. Thank you.
Okay, and Councilmember Zan.
Yes, thank you. Well, I will express my gratitude as well for the really hard work you've done. It's really clear you've been listening to us and the things that we care about. So it's, this is like, a little bit like walking into a candy store and seeing all kinds of stuff that we said we wanted in the store, and it's all in here in different pieces. I was actually thinking about my colleagues saying, maybe we avoid using the word streamline. And what I thought about was, you know, livable city for all is the, is one of the areas that you have in here. And I know we're going to talk about it next week, but to me, that is what high-performance government is actually constantly, streamlining and continuous improvement. So I really appreciate that embedded throughout the presentation. That's what we continue to be offered, is how you're really looking at streamlining, which then gives us more resources and funds for these other things that we also really want. So I thank you for that. It also feels like 2025 is a year of more plan updates, right? You said economic development plan, environmental stewardship plan, affordable housing plan, the various land use code updates with Bell Red and Wilburton. So I'm really excited that we're doing that. So it sounds like we are also making permanent some of the dog parks and then starting some other pop-up dog park locations. So thank you for that. I think our dog furry friends, thank you for that. So that's really good. On the affordable housing plan, I support the Office of Housing and also increasing the fee reduction funds. I do think that, in addition to my colleagues, that is going to be, what's going to activate and be even more of a catalyst for economic development because we have people that can live and work in Bellevue. I think our ability to attract talent that we rely on to keep our economy thriving, that that continues to be a challenge. So the more we can accelerate the affordable housing, especially hopefully some of the C1 properties, we're going to start to see hopefully some affordable housing moving. So appreciate that as a focus area. On the East Trail, I do want to make sure that there's some funds in there for access from neighborhoods to the trail because I know that we're moving forward right, we're in the middle of the Wilburton trestle. So as we think about even more of those, either parklets or access into East Trail for those neighborhoods, I think that'll be important. Support the Grand Connection. I think several people have brought it up about the cross-cultural center. I do think, having watched some of the cross-cultural center without walls and almost a windstorm at one of the parks in May when they had a program, that we really need a facility. So let's figure out how to move that forward and have some funding for that. And then in addition to, I believe that Deputy Mayor brought this up, on the environmental stewardship plan, I would like to better understand, well, first of all, thank you for keeping the staff that we have continually funded, but what would it take to accelerate even more of those investments? Can you help us understand what some of those funding mechanisms might look like, or is that more in the mid-buy? And then, Emile, you and I chatted about the, are there ways to partner even more with the school district or the sustainability ambassadors or others to create even more programs to work with youth on environmental sustainability? And then lastly, on the CIP delivery, you mentioned that this is the largest tranche of capital investment that we make is in this area. I would like to better understand whether we can provide more training for staff and how we might deliver in alternative ways. It's bringing in more staff that's knowledgeable in that. It will help with Grand Connection, cross-cultural center, forest stations. So would like to better understand that. But anyway, love everything in here. Thank you.
Great. Any comments or, okay? Well, you did a great job. We did a great job. This is a wonderful meeting, and with that, we are adjourned. We'll see you next week.
Thanks.